This morning, we had a very interesting meeting. I had an occasion to meet with Mayor Fuller, Ruth Ann Fuller, from Newton after her election recently. And we agreed that there were areas of potential collaboration between the city and the town of Brookline. And we ended up deciding that we would host a joint department head meeting. And that, in fact, happened this morning. We hosted it at our Putterham Golf Course where the mayor and I and our respective department heads met, talked a little bit about some issues, but mostly wanted to give department heads and their respective colleagues in the other community an opportunity to meet one another. Some have already, you know, had a relationship, but we had a very good meeting, I thought, and I think it will prove fruitful. Already, I've heard some ideas about some collaboration at the sort of operational level, but I'm sure you'll be hearing more about it. It was a very productive and unique meeting.
Yeah, well, it's good to have good relations with our neighbors. And it's a good thing to happen. I might have lost four words as I'm trying to tap dance until we get our fifth member.
I don't mean to put the chief of police on the spot, but how was chief for a day?
Ah. But you will put the chief of police on the spot.
I will.
Yeah, the chief of day was very well received this year. We had a young lady from the upper Lincoln School, and we did a presentation with her, and she came back to the police department. She had a staff meeting with myself and the deputies. She went right along with the officers. She came into the police chief's office. We had pictures with her and her family. They seemed very happy to be there, and she had a full day of activities in all different divisions. So I think it was very, hopefully, next year, we'll continue it.
And she was selected through an essay contest?
Yes, that's correct.
Where she has to say, like, what she would like to do?
She picks a topic, and she heard her topic is she was on bullying and what she could do and what people should do to stand up to bullies. And it was insightful as far as coming from a fifth grader.
Excellent.
And we have two park openings. Ms. Gallantyne, can you tell us about them? Put Ms. Gallantyne on the spot.
Good evening. Erin Gallantyne, Director of Parks and Open Space. So this Saturday, June 23rd, from 2:00 to 4:00, we are hosting the grand opening of Brookline Avenue Playground. This is Brookline's first inclusive playground, which means really goes beyond the American with Disabilities Act and looks at how children of all abilities, cognitive, mental, social, physical, play together. So there's a lot of design development and thought about integrated play. And so we're really excited. It's going to be a lot of fun. Hope you can join us for that. And on Tuesday, June 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we're hosting the grand opening of Emerson Garden. So full renovation, new play equipment, new gardens, gorgeous plantings. So we invite everyone to join us for that. And we will have, that's also the last day of school, so it's kind of a kickoff the summer celebration, and we'll have food trucks and music.
Cool.
Thank you.
Some fun times. And the parks have been unveiled slowly but surely. The curtains on the fences are starting to come down and revealing these beautiful parks. So very excited to get these parks back in business. Anyone else have any announcements? Okay, we have two folks signed up for public comment. Mr. Benka. Five minutes.
Thank you very much. Dick Benka, speaking as a resident of the town. I've asked for a few minutes to share with you a letter that was sent last week by the First Church in Chestnut Hill to our congressional delegation and to Governor Baker in light of the Trump administration policy of separating children from their families and their caregivers. We're gratified that Governor Baker has since that time, since the letter was sent, spoken out on this issue and withdrawn mass National Guard support for the effort. But now Congress must act, so thank you very much for the opportunity to share these thoughts. I'll spare you the citations in the letter. You have it in its entirety. As I said, it was sent to Governor Baker and to our congressional delegation. And it stated, "We, as a religious community, are writing you in response to a humanitarian crisis. In May 2018, the Trump administration issued a quote 'zero tolerance' policy for illegal immigration. This has led to mass criminal prosecutions of undocumented immigrants. It has also resulted in the separation of children from their families pending these prosecutions and immigration processing. It has resulted in legally valid asylum seekers being branded as criminals. It has resulted in children being held in prison-like conditions far from those who have cared for them their entire lives. These immigration policies are illegal under international law, as pointed out by the Office of the United Nations High Commissioner for Human Rights, a representative of which recently described the policies as 'criminalizing what is at most an administrative offense.' These policies are inconsistent with child welfare and run contrary to even the most basic interests of these children. These policies are inhumane, unethical, and unprecedented. They are immoral. They are a sin. The United States Constitution entrusts the federal legislative branch with the power to establish a uniform rule of naturalization. It is the responsibility of Congress to set immigration policy. And with that responsibility comes the obligation to respond to humanitarian crises. Yet it has not done so. The Trump administration is filling the gap with its current policy of family separation. Congress should take action now to prevent families from being torn apart. We ask that you dedicate your efforts to resolving the crisis without delay so that these families can be reunited. Sincerely, on behalf of the Standing Committee and Congregation of the First Church in Chestnut Hill." And while the First Church in Chestnut Hill is literally just on the other side of the tracks in Newton, the two signatories to this letter, Reverend Mark Cagiano, who is the minister to the church, and Werner Lowey, who is the chair of the Standing Committee, are both Brookline residents. We would not expect that this public body would use the word "sin," but we would ask that you add your voice on this issue just as a matter of simple human decency. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Just, is there a sentiment on the board to put this on the calendar next week?
You mean a statement of ours?
Yeah.
I would want to do that.
I would certainly support that. I find the appalling, I mean, you can't even, of all of the things that I disagree with that he, that our, this president has done, this seems to me the most despicable.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, it's in line with our policies on immigration. It's in line with concern in this town for, you know, understanding and coming to terms with our history of slavery. I mean, separation of children was a key element of that system. It's also in line with our, you know, horror at how refugees from Nazi Germany were turned away at our borders during the Second World War. So I think that, you know, this is something that really resonates with the town and, you know, the concerns that people have expressed with regards to just human decency.
I agree. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benka.
Thank you.
Mr. Frye, you've signed up.
Yes, I did.
Five minutes.
I won't use all of that. Chair Wiskinski and other select board members. Ernie Frye, town meeting member, precinct 7. Public comment is for items not already on the agenda for this meeting. My comment is for an item not on the agenda for this meeting, but regretfully was not on the agenda for either of the two, last two meetings of the board. Fall 2005 town meeting modified Brookline's bylaws, adding a section on procedures for fixing water and sewer rates. Most significantly, the Board of Selectmen, now the Select Board, is to conduct an annual public hearing regarding water and sewer rates. At least 21 days prior to that public hearing, the Board is to make known to town meeting members and the general public estimates of the proposed changes for the coming fiscal year. Water and sewer rates in prior years have been adjusted by the Board approval upon request of the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Division to be effective July 1. To my understanding, there has not yet been discussion of the rates to be effective July 1, 2018, for fiscal year 19. In June 2017, there was also no 21-day prior notice to town meeting members or the general public regarding the setting of the rates for fiscal year 18. But the rates for fiscal year 17 were continued for fiscal year 18, so there was not much concern at the lack of prior notice, especially as the discrepancy would surely be resolved in setting the rates for fiscal year 19. It seems that the discrepancy was not so addressed. In view of the lack of notice as required by Brookline bylaws, I suggest the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 19 be set to not greater than the fixed fiscal year 18 rates. Further, if a change in water and sewer rates is desired, it should be effective not earlier than September 1, 2018, with the required 21-day early announcement of those rates prior to the public hearing and the required report on the estimated differential impact of the proposed fees on cost to the consumer. In the run-up to the fall 2015 town meeting, the warrant article that resulted in this section being added to the bylaws was passed unanimously by both the Select Board and the Advisory Committee, suggesting strong support by both of these bodies. Town meeting passed the article unanimously. This strong show of support suggests that this bylaw change matters to many. And finally, for fiscal year 19, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund will collect about $30 million. Property taxes are budgeted at $223 million. So the average citizen paying 100% of their property tax will then pay almost another 15% for water and sewer fees. The water and sewer fee is not an incidental expense for most. I suggest better attention to the procedures for fixing water and sewer rates as described in the Brookline bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take that under advisement, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you. Okay, so let's dig into our calendar. We have minutes for the 12th of June. Just had a small correction. Any other corrections?
I'm just kidding.
Okay. I'll move approval of the June 12 minutes as amended.
By the way, I have a couple small corrections, too.
Okay.
Just for the record.
All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have an extra work order for $202,000 for the recycling contract with the Casella Waste. Mr. Papsturgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, several weeks ago, just prior to town meeting, I came before you and requested your approval for a reserve fund transfer to cover the increase in recycling costs for processing single-stream waste, as I detailed at that time. The increase was due to the change in the Chinese recycling market, all but banning all of imports from the United States and other countries that did not meet stringent contamination levels of 0.5%. Town meeting subsequently did approve a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $200,000. The actual deficit for FY18 is on the order of $232,000, of which we're able to cover a portion of that through surpluses in the Public Works budget. Nonetheless, though, I do need to process an extra work order to our contractor, Casella Waste Management Incorporated, to finalize our invoices for FY18.
Any questions about this? We had a long discussion the other night, a couple of weeks ago, about this. Then I'll move that we approve the extra work order in the amount of $202,000 for Casella Waste Management. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is an increase in the amount, a change order for $172,732.91 to the contract with Shawma Design and Construction at the Coolidge Corner School, formerly known as the Devotion School. Mr. Wiggly.
Good evening. Yes, good evening. This is change order number 23, as you stated correctly, and it has been approved by the, both the building commission and the school representative who signs these. And I don't know if you wanted me to run through?
No, no.
We had questions on any?
There's 33 items.
Yeah.
Some increase, some decrease. This seems like all kinds of stuff happening towards the end of a project. There's a couple of big ones, like number 33.
And what, may I ask, is a chill-out room?
A chill-out room.
That needs padding.
Well, a chill-out, a chill-out room is, I guess it's a time-out room for stu-, I understand that this school is a sort of a center for students that have, who need services of time-out rooms and chill-out rooms. The padding is something that the school department wants in these rooms for student and staff safety and also for cleaning and maintenance. And originally, we had gym padding in these rooms, but the schools, after further study, felt that a more, a more involved system was necessary in order to achieve all those results.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think it's commendable that our school system, you know, provide services to kids who have severe behavioral problems and nonetheless really need the education so they can become functioning members of society at whatever level. So I just never heard of the name chill-out room, but I think it's, like I said, commendable that we provide these facilities.
So the big questions, does the budget have enough to cover this?
The budget has enough to cover this change order, yes. The, it was, I always run through the change orders with the comptroller, and I look at the budget overall, and yes.
Okay, and is any of this reimbursable from MSBA?
Anything, for example, number 33, that big one, will not be reimbursable because anything that's a scope change afterwards requested by the owner, they will not reimburse. And they go through these and they decide which ones are reimbursable. And historically, a significant number of them turn out not to be reimbursable.
I'm surprised.
They're tough to work with.
And how about the schedule?
The schedule, the, I'll say this, this project, I believe, it's my opinion, is a challenge to the contractor. The substantial completion date is July 31st, which is about six weeks away. I believe the students will get in for the new school year, but I don't believe this contractor will make that substantial completion date. I think they'll be working with us right up until we move in. And we're actually moving in now, so it's not going to be a, the clean, seamless turnover of a building to us, and then we just have the run of moving in. It's going to be, we're all going to be working together right up until Labor Day and actually beyond. The contractor will, I believe, have a significant amount of work to do once the building, even past the school, you know, the opening of school. For example, the green screen on Stedman Street, there was procurement issues there. But again, I believe we'll be in on a temporary occupancy, but it's, our aim is safety and quality, and I think people will be, I hope people will be happy with the finished product.
So any other questions or comments? I'll move that we approve the change order, an increase in the amount of $172,732.91 to the contract with Shawma Design and Construction, in connection with renovations and additions to the Coolidge Corner School. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is a question of approving the submission of a grant application to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Brookline Reservoir. Ms. Gallantyne.
Erin Gallantyne, Director of Parks and Open Space. So this request is for authorization to submit a grant to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It is for Brookline Reservoir. We are seeking the budget category 1, which is a grant up to $1 million. The town needs to provide a 25% match, which we have in hand. It is funding that has already been approved by town meeting as part of the overall Brookline Reservoir Park renovation project. As you all know, now, the Brookline Reservoir is categorized as a dam and is managed by the Office of Dam Safety, so there's a lot of work that's required as part of our park renovation project to bring that dam into compliance. And so this is really a terrific opportunity, should we be successful, to leverage this program, to do the required work that we need to do, and also do work on the historic valves at the gatehouse, which is also a requirement but currently unfunded, to manage and control the water level in the reservoir, both as emergency control or for maintenance.
Okay. And this was the topic of a town meeting vote, some of the foundational work in terms of the restrictions that we have to?
So interestingly, this is actually separate.
Oh, really?
The town meeting vote was for Mass Historic, the Mass Historic Commission Preservation Grant, which we did submit, and hopefully, I'll be coming back with good news shortly. And that does require a preservation restriction around the gatehouse. This does not have that type of restriction. We enter into a contract, we have to, you know, provide regular quarterly reports, and we'll continue our reports to the Office of Dam Safety as we currently do anyway, but there are no preservation restrictions.
Oh, okay.
As part of this grant, yes.
Okay.
Make sure you have that down in writing.
Well, this sounds like a no-brainer to approve. We're just applying right now, so.
That's right. And if we are successful, we'll come back and explain all of this to the Board again with the contract in hand.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve the submission of a grant application to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Brookline Reservoir Dam and Gatehouse. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And moving on to our main calendar, first item is authorizing the filling of a parking control officer vacancy in the traffic division. Haven't we talked about this?
Yes, we did, déjà vu, a couple of weeks ago. That was for a resignation. This position that I'm asking you to authorize is for an employee who's been on long-term sick leave for quite a while and has not recovered enough that they'll be able to come back to fulfill the duties of that job. So in light of that, I'm asking you to?
So this is an additional position?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? I'll move there for that we authorize the filling of parking control officer vacancy in the traffic division of the police department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have an item of possibly amending the zoning board of appeals fee schedule. Mr. Bennett, you going to talk about this?
Yeah, we're requesting the selectman vote on some amended fees for the zoning board of appeals. This is for a number of reasons. The first is, as we transition into the ACELA program, it is easy to have specific fees and not a sliding scale for the public. We're looking to do this online. So we've come up with a new format for the fees that essentially, the larger the project, the larger the fee; the smaller the project, the smaller the fee. In addition, we reviewed these for staff time, and we feel that it's the appropriate amount to charge an applicant. And we have actually lowered one of the fees. It would be the modification for zoning board of appeals case, so that doesn't take the time that some of the others do. So we've lowered that to, I think it was $350. And then we've added a new fee for the retail marijuana application.
So if you're adding, let's say, if you're, if you're building a 3,000-square-foot house, you're, it would be $350 plus 3 times 50?
That's what the current, the current thing is.
Oh, 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 okay.
So the right-hand side is $350 for anything $500 or less, $400 for anything between $500 and 1,000 square feet, 500 if you're adding more than 1,000, and 1,001 and higher is $750. And it's based on staff time. You know, the higher end there, the 750, is a lot of the larger commercial projects, so there is some preliminary meetings that you have to have. So kind of, it's a wash, and some of the residential ones is more staff time in the planning department.
So this is just getting to the zoning board of appeals, and then if they pull a building permit, then it's 2% of the?
Correct, yes.
Of the construction costs.
Yeah, this is strictly the application to the zoning board.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, then I'll move that we amend the zoning board of appeals Exhibit D fee schedule. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, and now we have an expense reimbursement agreement with the MBTA as required by our memorandum of standing, and this is relating to the Brookline High School project. Mr. Masak, welcome.
Ray Masak, Building Department. Yes, this was kind of plated as part of the memorandum of agreement, and there's probably a number of reimbursement agreements that we'll have with the T. And this is for outside project management and outside council, and we'll be funding that with $25,000 come July 1.
Okay.
Oh, and the force account was envisioned.
Right.
Initially, when we put the project together from a budgetary standpoint.
The one thing that makes me nervous is the T is in control of this, and we're kind of trusting the T to spend our money wisely. But I guess, you know, the agreement does call for monthly reports, though we don't have right of, this is for their council, so, you know, we don't have right of refusal. We just have a right of audit. So I guess that's just the way this thing is going to be.
It's like going to the bank for a mortgage, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And speaking with outside council, this is their typical agreement.
Yeah, we're the ones who want to build over the T, so they're, they're in control. So any questions from the Board? Okay, I'll move that we execute an expense reimbursement agreement with the MBTA as required by the MOA executed on May 29th in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project. And I'll also move that we authorize town administrator or project manager execute further agreements required by the MOA. manager to execute further agreements required by the MOA on behalf of the town. I'll just, I'm going to add a condition to that vote, that this board be provided copies of all such agreements signed by town administrator or the project manager, just so we're kept informed. These are big obligations, so I think we should be informed.
For a very high-profile project.
Right. So all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
There's a second.
I did them both at the same time. Okay, we have Brookline Interactive Group with their annual report to us. Spisby, welcome.
Austin's my tech support this evening.
Especially the way around, isn't it?
Thank you. I think someone who got this at the town meeting, but I thought I'd give you another one, please, if you could look that up. How are you? Thank you.
All right.
No, she's just going to be... It'll pop up. Okay. I'm a Mac person, so sometimes PCs scare me a little, even though I used to do tech support in them a long time ago. We're actually going to be making some changes this year and switching to PCs, so I'll get a lot more experience with them soon. Good evening, thank you so much for having me here.
Why don't you introduce yourself to our vast TV audience.
Oh, yes, of course, for the television audience as well. I'm Kathy Spisby, and the executive director of Brookline Interactive Group. So I want to, first of all, as always, start out by thanking Mel Kleckner and Austin Vazan for their efforts to continue the work with the cable companies to negotiate the cable fees for the RCN contract on behalf of the town of Brookline. And I also want to thank Bernard Green, who was able to witness the broad support for our organization and the appreciation for our services by over 25 residents. Thank you for staying through the whole evening, I know it was a little lengthy, but not as lengthy as the Comcast negotiations that I think Austin and Mel and also Neil hosted two years ago, where we had 80 letters of support and folks come out for four hours of hearing.
This room was full.
It was very full, and we had two hearings, two separate hearings, so it was four hours the first time, two the second time. So we're very grateful that folks appreciate and support our services, and thank you so much to all of you who do that as well, and I'm going to mention a few others of you in a moment. And, you know, we continue to support and thrive, serve and thrive as your community media center, providing thousands of hours of hyper-local community content, recording and archiving over 650 hours of live cable and online streaming government and school meeting coverage, and providing access to media-making tools and classes for over 500 residents and youth, and for many of our local nonprofits, schools, town committees, departments, and local businesses in Brookline. In the past 12 months, BIG has launched more new educational programs in partnership in Brookline than ever before, including new collaborations with Brookline Police and Fire, Recreation, Diversity and Inclusion, Economic Development, Brookline High School, the Arts Commission, the Health Department, the Housing Authority at our April community screening, and our dialogue on affordable housing at the Coolidge. And I want to thank Heather Hamilton, select board member, for coming and being on that panel, and I think she's also volunteered to be on the transportation panel that we'll be hosting in the fall, so we're excited to have her at that. And then most recently, more of our staff showed up to provide some extra roles at town meeting to make it a better town meeting this year. We're looking forward to our next community screening on our members' film on bicycle commuting, a fall forum that we're having on transportation, which we've been warned might be a controversial topic. We've reached out to town staff to help us walk through the landmines and assure that all voices are heard, and perhaps especially those who are often underrepresented in that topic. I do want to mention, just as a brief update, that we have talked to the school department and the town folks in terms of the building this summer, and I do want to alert folks that throughout the summer, the elevator will be down, so our members will be walking up and down three flights of stairs, and our staff are going to get very strong calves this summer, and we will be doing some things out in the community as a result, which I think is a great opportunity that we're all looking forward to, but we will have no elevator from the 26th of June until September 1st.
That's three stories, that's kind of like five.
It is, it's kind of steep stories, it's true. Continuing in the report, in the past year, we've purchased over $75,000 worth of capital improvements to upgrade town school and UA building facilities with a new broadcast server that already town departments are being trained on how to use. One of the benefits is that it allows town departments to do their own calendar listings, flyers, updates to the cable channels directly, so we thought it was a good investment to do that, and we've been training departments on how to do that with emergency updates, cameras, microphones, two live streaming servers, and much more, and you'll be happy to know, we can handle thousands of local residents and beyond on the streaming servers now. I'm going to knock on wood, just in case, but we do have two backup servers now, and feel very confident that that new purchase of the server is going to help us to make sure that we have very strong live and cable content for you. As a community media center over the past three and a half decades, we've been dependent on funds from the cable franchise, initially intended for these kinds of media purchases and programs to support our growing programs and services for our community. Over the past three years, we've brought in new revenue and earned income, which is brand-new for BIG, to supplement the cable fees for our community media work, allowing us to launch much of this new work and these programs that you're seeing in our annual report, and I did also leave some in the back for community members if you'd like to get a copy of that. But unfortunately, as of July 1st, 2018, our funding will decrease by $40,000 for the fiscal year 2018-2019. I wanted to alert you to that. It, of course, makes our extensive programs and programming more difficult to offer with our current funding levels, and will require a focus in 2018 and 2019 on board fundraising and new fees for many of our media services that we currently provide for free or for low cost. We hope that this board and our community will help us mitigate the loss of these funds, and work creatively with us to find solutions that don't result in any fewer services to the Brookline community. And our board is working very hard on generating some of those new opportunities, and we'll keep you in the loop as we move forward. So, very quickly, before I show you the video, a couple of very quick highlights that we're most proud of for last year. In our partnership with Steps to Success and BHS, we trained 20 high school students in our brand-new job training program that we started in September. It's been so exciting, it's one of my favorite programs, I have a passion for young people and for job training program in particular. 60% of these students were either low-income and/or students of color, and we pay them an hourly wage, so they actually get Massachusetts minimum wage for their works while they're learning video production, management, client management skills, which is really important that we teach young people these kinds of soft skills, and communication skills as they plan, shoot, and edit town events, graduation, performing arts, live studio shoots, and community events for cable channels. So I want to thank the Community Foundation and Steps to Success and our team of students, and I'm very happy to report that the Red Sox CEO, who is a Brookline High graduate, happened to meet him at a lunch, and he invited all of our students for our job training program to a game next Tuesday, so they're going to get to go to a game, some of them for the first time ever, and they're even going to meet their counterparts in their careers in the marketing department. We're going to go three hours before the game, and we'll get to go meet those folks in the marketing department, so that they can really get an idea of what it would be like if they continued forward in this kind of work, so we're excited about that as well. On the topic of immigration, the Community Foundation also recently provided a grant for our work documenting Brookline's immigration stories. So we've already started this last week, we had three folks come in and tell their immigration stories, and one of the reasons we think this is really important, given the conversation tonight, we feel that a lot of folks will say things like, "Well, my family came illegal, came legally, why can't people today?" And the fact is, many of us who came before 1924, there were no laws, we didn't come legally or illegally, and so we feel like there's a way to really represent some voices that are not generally heard in this conversation about what happened throughout our timeline as a country, and we can represent some of that as Brookline. So we're inviting the community members, if any of you have a really interesting, or not even an interesting, just an average, "Our family came here in 1620," or "Our family came here in 1880," or 2017, we'd love to hear it, and we invite you in the community to come in and tell your stories. We have an average of 16 live cable shows every month, and many programs that people come in and do, I know you know many of them, Age Friendly Cities is in there all the time, Grandstanders, which is now featured on the Patches website as well, on updates in sports, they have all of these famous sports people coming into our facilities, and sometimes I know them if they're baseball, but otherwise, they're just really tall men usually, which is a lot of fun. Our community journalism program has done a monthly news show and shorts about different topics in the community, you can find them all on YouTube and on our cable channels, and we've trained over 250 adults and youth on making media and covering their community. So one of the biggest thrills of the year was that we were invited to the United Nations, you may have read the article in the tab, to present on emerging media. So we did some talks, and we also presented some content, and they paid for us to come to Nairobi, Kenya, which was a thrill for all of us, and also just to represent the work of Brookline as an innovator in the world. We were really proud to be there and represent Brookline and BIG as an innovator in community media. We've hosted film festivals, Film Sprint, hackathons, meetups, screening at the Coolidge, we've given funds to local filmmakers like Ansley Ford, who created the wonderful film on affordable housing, we've coordinated community media arts projects, an art gallery, and collaborated with seniors, low-income residents, and students to provide access to job training, creativity, and community. And one of the most exciting and final things I want to share with you is that we won the national award for best public access television station in the country. That's pretty amazing. Thank you. Yes. Greetings to our team. Along with three of our members who also won awards, Marshall Holly, Charlie Walsh, and the Grandstanders, they all won national awards as well. We look forward to finalizing our contract with the town in 2018 and continuing our work to provide access to community media in Brookline. I'll show you a quick video, and then it'll be available for any questions that you might have, and I just want to thank you again for having me here and for reading, hopefully, our annual report, and feel free to email me as well with any questions that you have.
Okay.
And I'm going to show this, I think. Austin?
Said your device is ready to use.
It went somewhere. This is the problem with PCs, I can't find anything. Cool. Yep, and this was made by three of our staff members, actually, Shannon Ortali, who's one of our new staff members, Corbin Rydel, who's our new assistant director, and Nia Jerome, who is our lead creative designer. They did a great job. Hopefully, we have audio. Yep.
Probably want to make it fullscreen when you can.
My hopes and dreams for the new year is to have a lot of peace, to have a lot of health. And the great thing about BIG is, once you take a class, you can then come back and get help. They don't just send you out there on your own. We do events like this frequently, just to help the community and to bring people together in Brookline.
Being here today with so many hundreds of other volunteers standing up, standing for what we believe in, and that was important.
Discuss issues that are facing all of us.
If projects like this, you know, have a real chance, how do we do more?
Let your voice be high.
The things I learned from job training were pretty useful, especially when I was in college, I would have a slight jumpstart kickstart into whatever field I choose.
Everybody has a place at BIG, and that is one of the things that I think is extraordinary about it. Everybody is welcome. Kids work there, kids show up there, nobody has ever turned away.
We did the crowdsourced cinema project last summer, you probably saw Back to the Future in there, and we had all kinds of people come out, we had 46 scenes that we broke into one-to-four-minute increments of Back to the Future, and we remade it as a community art project. So we call it Crowdsourced Boston, and we are doing it again this year, and the film is Ferris Bueller's Day Off. And I think that I would like to welcome the select board as a team to remake a scene from the film, so I just want to leave that out with you and encourage you to talk to me about the possibility. We'll set it all up for you, we'll help you do it, all you have to do is keep to the original dialogue, and you can do it with sock puppets if you want, but I think it'd be wonderful for the community to see you out there doing a cool art project with BIG and other community members, so...
I can see our chair dancing on a float now.
Sounds like fun.
Any questions for me or comments, or...
Well, thank you. This is great. Yeah. Mr. Green.
Our chairperson, Mr. Wyszynski, always prefaces a speaker's remarks by saying, "Speak up for our vast TV audience." Do you have any way of knowing how vast our audiences?
Well, I'll tell you that...
I know that it's not zero, because I always run into people who complain about how I sit, how I talk, the shine on my head.
It's good that they're vocal. You know, one of the challenges in all of community media across the country is that the cable companies say that that's proprietary information, and they do not usually give that to... I've never seen it happen where we've been able to access that information, but I do know anecdotally, of course, that we also get many calls about the channels, and when there is a problem with the channels, we, I am bombarded, and all city staff, as well, town staff, and also members of the community even text my personal cellphone. So I do, I do know that people are watching, I do know that our hits online, which we do have access to, are considerable. You know, we saw for some of the really, you know, we had problems with the streaming this year because of the number of people who were watching the streaming, I mean, we had hundreds and hundreds of people watching. So I think that definitely a couple hundred people max have watched online, and that's why it was really a priority for us to make sure that in addition to the cable, which is, you know, how we're funded and what we're mandated and is really our legacy, but additionally, online is also a channel for us now, and so we've made sure that that's reliable so that hundreds and hundreds of people can comment on your appearance.
Yeah, I know, for example, last Wednesday, that was the meeting here where we voted on a direction for the school expansion, elementary school expansion. I received a number of comments on how interesting that particular meeting was, and there were a lot of, I think there were a lot of people watching for a long period of time.
I know George White has also told me that he gets a lot of comments from town meeting members if they're... members if they're unable to attend or if they want to watch it afterwards or members who, from his district, that, from his precinct, that aren't unable to come to the meeting or want to just see how things go, that he gets a lot of comments about that as well. So, I think that's good feedback for us as well.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
We have the Brookline Commission for the Arts. For those who are here for the Tom China, I'm estimating, we're running about, I'm going to say about 30 minutes behind, so.
I will be very brief.
Okay.
Thank you. It's an arty night.
Yeah.
My name's Amy Emmert. I am chairman for the Commission for the Arts and I reside in precinct one. I want to express my appreciation for allowing us to present what we've been doing this year. And I'm going to be very brief and only talk about a few things. We are in the midst of finalizing our annual report, which is going to be nicely designed by our many talented members, commissioners, who are very interested in design and the arts and I'm sure it'll, it'll be a pretty thing to see and it'll come out soon. And we welcome any comments by the select board on what, on the content of that report. The Commission for the Arts oversees a number of programs, including things like the poet laureate, Town Hall Walls. We also choose a cultural contributor award each year and this year it went to Joe Zina, who was really the, the person who drove the resurgence in the Coolidge Corner Cinema. So, he was really very important. And he was very touched by, by getting this award because he didn't know if anybody remembered. So, it was really great. And I sent along a text version in advance so you could have the chance to look at it if you had a chance. The, one of the main responsibilities of the Commission for the Arts is to administer the Mass Cultural Commission Grants Awards Program. And this year, we chose 16 awards and awarded a total of $11,300. They fell into five categories and were distributed across those categories as follows. Film, video, and new media received about 6% of the funding. Music, theater, and visual arts each received about 25%. And then culture, history, and nature category received about 19%. And I provided some detail in the report on what these, some of the goals of these projects are. They're, they're groups that do a lot with a little and they really accomplish a great deal and every little bit of funding helps them. One of the more controversial guidelines we have is that, which the commissioners are very unanimously in support of, is that we do not allow any group to receive funding for more than three years in a row because we're trying to treat it more like seed money for new projects and not become, you know, we're worried that eventually all the money will be absorbed by ongoing projects that, you know, don't reach out for other funding. So, but although, you know, you may hear from time to time, some of those groups tend to come in and complain about that, but, you know, they, they get to come back after a year hiatus, so. So, a few things that we've accomplished this year that I would like to point out that's kind of, that we're proud of. We did do a cultural survey and this was led by Commissioner Alana Scolier. This has been very helpful for us to set our goals. Some key issues came out of that survey. I added a few graphs from, from the survey there. There were a number of, of measures. But three main messages came out. One was that we need to figure out some kind of a consolidated arts and cultural calendar, cultural events calendar, because people are having a real hard time trying to figure out what's going on and they get upset when they don't know about something until after the, after the fact. This is a challenging issue because there are cultural calendars, like the Boston area cultural calendar. The problem is Brookline events get, just completely disappear into the mix. And I did notice recently that Cambridge does, has a clever thing. They, they do a cultural calendar and they hardwire the address as in Cambridge, so other people can't list their events except for Cambridge events in it. And that's kind of an interesting approach. We're going to talk about that in the coming year and really try to solve this problem. We also, again, you've probably heard this in many other venues, heard about the need for more performance space in Brookline. It's a huge issue. There are many, many people who want to perform, small and large groups, for music and other things, and they're really making do as best they can, but there is a much bigger demand than the spaces that we have. And so, we're going to continue to look for opportunities around that as well. People also want to see much more effort around public art. And there's a, I'm going to speak a little bit now about public art in Brookline. It's, it's, it is a, an issue that is very important for the community. Commissioner Elmer Sprague has been developing a historical record of the existing public art in Brookline using Smithsonian and town records and other historical sources. And he's working with BIG, actually, on a town-funded project to document the public art in Brookline for an online availability. And he's going to be annotating it with the historical information that he's gathering. And it's a very interesting project. For example, he unearthed some information about the equestrian statue out here in front of the library, which everybody goes by and doesn't think twice about. There's, it's actually a very interesting piece of artwork. It appears that it may be one of very few and perhaps the only equestrian statue commissioned in the United States that depicts a soldier, a regular soldier, rather than an officer. And apparently, it was intentionally, that was the intention of the commission by the town of Brookline back in the day. And we're trying to get more information about how that, how that happened. Public art is typically commissioned in one of two ways, permanent and temporary, so there are two different sort of streams there. You know, that some of the temporary exhibits are wonderful, they, they draw people together. It sort of has an urgency and it gets people to show up and understand what the message is that they're trying to convey. But there's also a great value in developing permanent public art. Many towns set aside modest amounts of money from various revenue sources so that periodic investments in public art can be made via competitions and it's usually administered by the local commission. And also, to make sure that appropriate maintenance takes place. And unfortunately, some of our public art in Brookline is badly in need of, of maintenance. That sculpture in particular, that equestrian statue, it may need more than just a touch-up. Maintenance is a, is an interesting issue. It can be a public event to deal with maintenance. This past weekend, I went to the trustees of reservations, had a South End Garden tour walk, self-guided, and I ended up in the Harriet Tubman Parklet there and heard all about the annual event to clean and wax the sculptures there. And they are beautiful, they're in perfect condition. And it's very similar to the John Wilson monumental head sculpture at the National Center for African-American Artists in Roxbury. They have an annual clean and wax the head event and it's very popular and it provides an opportunity for people to get together and have some education about, about the work. So, it does, it's not all about, you know, it's not always a public, it's not always a town expense to maintain public art. There may be some significant, you know, base work and engineering work that has to be done sometimes, but typically not, so. And speaking of John Wilson, the John Wilson sculpture acquisition for the town of Brookline will be the first major public art installation for quite a while and will be funded through contributions to a fund set up by the Brooklyn, Brookline Community Foundation. And we are well on our way to achieving that goal of being able to acquire that sculpture for Town Hall. But in general, the commission's going to be spending a lot of time thinking about public art and thinking about some ideas that we can float and how to, how to acquire more public art, you know, fund more public art projects, temporary projects, and other things. The other initiative that we wanted, I wanted to bring to this meeting is that the Arts Commission has approved moving forward with formal planning to begin establishing a cultural district in Brookline. Brookline does not have a cultural district and this is a state-funded, a state-run program, largely administered through the MCC. A cultural district is a designated area of town that's walkable, accessible, has a unique cultural and artistic identity, and serves as the center of cultural, artistic, and economic activity for that area and sometimes reaching quite broadly out across the town. The cultural districts program creates access to various state and private funding opportunities, some which can be quite significant, particularly the capital funds associated with cultural districts and being able to revamp spaces within the district and buildings. We will be, you know, working hard on that, to bring that forward. Our goal is to get it, get the application in by the end of this calendar year. There's a lot of work to do, there's public meetings, there are different committees that have to get together. But generally speaking, so far over the past year, as we've been building up enthusiasm about the project, a lot of great people have stepped forward and want to help and it should be, should be really exciting. We will obviously have to bring this back to the select board on periodic basis and bring you up to date on where we are, what our goals are, and get your input. And ultimately, you all will have to help us submit this application to the state and back it up. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that the Arts Commission is always looking for new members and in particular, members with diverse perspectives on how the commission can contribute to the arts of Brookline. So, if anybody knows anybody who is interested in joining the commission, we, we have some open spots. As always, we're very interested in any suggestions that the select board has regarding the ways that Commission for the Arts can help advance arts and culture in Brookline. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? This, sounds like you have a lot going on.
Hope so.
I'm especially excited about the John Wilson acquisition. I was talking to Rob Davies, one of the leaders of the effort, and the fundraising seems to be going well and we're on our way. So, hopefully, in the near future-
About two-thirds, two-thirds there. Yeah, we're on, and that's, we're ahead of schedule, so it's-
Yes, that's, that's good stuff.
Just need to take it over the line.
The cultural district, is there, fill me in on the details. Is there a location that you're talking about or?
We have started to-
Where is that?
Yes. So, we have to, we've done a lot of walking around, mapping, doing a cultural assets inventory, which is part of the process, and trying to draw some theoretical lines around what might be a good space, place to start. You can have multiple cultural districts in the same town. And we're settling in on, on Brookline Village, right here, the original center of Brookline. There, there are a number of reasons for that. One is there, when you really get down to it and start looking at who's here, you know, they're also, you're also inventorying actual artists and people who live in the area, as well as businesses that are trying to make business out of culture and arts. Brookline Village is actually amazingly rich. It also has this nice architectural cohesiveness. It has a lot of history to bring out, it's a, you know, it's a lot, and, and it's an interesting place to walk around. The cultural districts, what you do is you work, you know, one of the subcommittees is a public space, public art, wayfinding, that sort of thing, transportation team that focuses on, you know, you know, kiosks and historic, you know, bringing historical information from the committee that does all the history, you know, to make it available for, for folks to, to read and learn about. And that's also a, the whole public space part of the cultural district is also an area where there are different kinds of funding mechanisms to help improve those, those public spaces. But we're thinking about Brookline Village. We had our first meeting, sort of a key stakeholder meeting, just about a week ago. And we did get some expression from some folks from Coolidge Corner that we should also do a Coolidge Corner Cultural District and try to do two cultural districts at the same time. So, that's the kind of debate we're having right now to try to determine what would be the best first step forward with this project.
Is there any thought to developing a, like in many cities, an artist incubator?
Yes.
Artistic incubator?
Absolutely, that, and in fact, there are state program. I've attended a few meetings out, you know, with other groups and there are state resources available to help with, you know, laying out the opportunities for landlords who have buildings that they don't know quite what to do with right now and to, to understand what a arts benevolent landlord can do and the kinds of things that they might be able to do to enhance, to, to open up an opportunity for both affordable housing for artists as well as studio spaces and, and incubator-type spaces.
Just a quick word on the, the public art inventory and chronicling project. I think that's especially important. I hope and I'm sure it does include both publicly-owned public art, but also privately-owned public art, arts that sits on private property.
That everybody looks at all the time.
Everybody looks at.
I will make sure that it's doing that.
And I think that, that this inventory and chronicling is a great first step. I think an opportunity, once we know what is out there, is to try and link it together so you can create arts walks or some sort of resource where people can learn more about something that they may pass by every day and not know the history of. One of the, the great pleasures in life, from my opinion, is to stumble upon a piece of art in an unexpected place. And I think this, this project by, by Elmer Sprague is a, is a great first step to, to opening up some privately-owned spaces where art might exist, to linking together art into a cohesive whole, doing some education, and ultimately, helping people to understand the value that, that public art can bring to a public space.
Wow, that's great. That's so well said. Thank you.
We need to move on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item up is the application of a New England Treatment Access for alternate manager, Harrison Rovner.
My name's Eric Holler. I am the general manager of the dispensary down the street. We are here this evening to gain approval of Harrison Rovner, one of our new team leads as an alternate manager with the town. He's been with us for about 18 months. Started as a patient service associate, performed at a very high level in that role and earned a promotion into the management team end of April, early May. In addition to going through the Brookline background check process, he's also gone through a background check with the state of Massachusetts, Commonwealth, excuse me, and is a badge dispensary agent with the Department of Public Health at this time. We, we welcome any questions you have for myself or Harry.
You've met with the police department and you've gone over the, the rules. I know Neta has been a good citizen and you've been very responsive to any issues that have come up, so we appreciate that and hope, hope you'll continue in, in, in that spirit.
Certainly, certainly.
Especially, we anticipate you're applying for, under, under the new law to become a adult-use dispensary.
Yeah, that's correct. We are still in the application process, but have not, not quite gotten to the finish line with that one yet.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. So, I will move that we approve the application of a New England Treatment Access Registered Marijuana Dispensary, 160 Washington Street, for an alternate manager, Harrison Rovner. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is a public hearing on the 2019 Annual Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. And I hope Mr. Viola, you'll summarize it quickly and then we'll take as much public comment as the public wants to give us.
Sure. Good evening, Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. As the chair mentioned, this public hearing is related to the fiscal '19 CBG Annual Action Plan. It requires that we have a public comment process as part of our annual process. Planning staff placed a legal notice advertising the availability of our draft plan this past May. As of this week, the 30-day public comment period has elapsed and that is why we're here tonight for- here tonight for our public hearing. Town's annual action plan tells essentially citizens in HUD how we plan to use our CBG block grant funds for the upcoming fiscal year. And also, the public hearing gives an opportunity for, one last opportunity for public comment before we take any comments we've received tonight, revise the plan and submit it to HUD for approval. The actual process for programming funds began this past January. Every year, we release a request for proposals for competitive applications. The town's CBG Advisory Committee led by Select Board Member Franco reviewed applications at two meetings this past February and March. And we used an assumption of $1.34 million, which was our level funding for last year's CBG to inform the committee's deliberations. On a bit of good news, we actually received an increase this year. We actually received $1.41 million from HUD. And we made an adjustment to the committee's recommendations based on discussions we had at the deliberation meetings. So those increases were based on direction that we received over two nights when we had our public meetings. The committee's funding recommendations were included in your packet for review. Just quickly, they reflect the committee's wishes that in the event we did receive an increase, that we would fully fund public service activities to the greatest extent possible. We were able, actually to fully fund all of our public service activities, which is a pretty, pretty good outcome. As well, the committee deliberated on housing activities. We were able to fund, the committee was able to fund three capital improvement projects for the Brookline Housing Authority, as well as provide additional funding for JCH's 62 units of senior housing at Temple KI. And finally, committee recommended for additional funding for gateway, gateway east right-of-way acquisition funds for all the temporary and permanent easements that we need to acquire. As you all know from this past town meeting, we have pretty much full steam ahead to move forward with that project and we're rapidly moving toward our August bid date for that project.
Wow.
So, so with that, that's a very quick overview of the committee process and the funding recommendations. And I'm here to request that the chair invite public comment on the annual action plan and of course, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, so there's some really worthy projects receiving funding through the CBG process. It's heartening that there was a little bit of a bump. Especially given what we've been hearing coming out of Washington, which hasn't been good news for this particular program, but it's been protected by our members of Congress to a degree. So that's, that's a good thing. But the administration continues, the Trump administration, God, it's hard to say that, is continuing to try to kill this program, but will continue to do good things with it as long as it's available. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the CBG block grant? Okay, I see none. Any comments from the Board? Screen.
Isn't it ironical that CBG program came into being under Richard Nixon as a conservative attempt to, you know, reduce government spending in community programs? And now that's been killed by whatever the current administration is. But at any rate.
Or trying to kill it.
Trying to kill it. Somewhat related, one of the requirements in this and other federal grants is, or at least in this grant, is a requirement that we adopt in terms of the programming, a no excessive force policy. I just want to highlight that as something that, you know, may be, maybe something we're going to be losing going forward, but it, it is important in terms of the right of people to demonstrate nonviolently, you know, civil rights and other issues in connection with these programs. But let me just say that the pagination in the application is off, so it may just be, you know, our copies, but.
It may be and we'll give it one more final edit before it's sent, but I'm pretty sure we had, we had some, when we entered into the computer program that spits out the document, there's sometime, some errors that occur in the Word document, but we will certainly fix that before it's submitted.
So I have a number of votes. I'll do them in omnibus fashion. So I'll move that we approve the submission of the FY 2019 Federal Fiscal Year 18 CBG Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'll also move that we authorize the chair to execute the application of federal assistance in SF 424 and other certifications required for submission of the FY 2019 Annual Action Plan. And I'll also move that we authorize the Director of Planning and Community Development to execute required environmental review documents on behalf of the town for the fiscal 19 CBG funded projects. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's interesting. I said we'd be running a half hour behind and boom, I hit it right on the button.
You're getting pretty good at this.
Yeah. Actually, two minutes short of a half hour. Okay. So moving on to the public hearing on whether the common victual license held by Tam China, Tom China Restaurant Inc., doing business as Tom China Kosher Restaurant, Andy Chung manager, at 423A to 425 Harvard Street should be modified, suspended, revoked, canceled or not renewed for the 2019 annual licensing period or set any other conditions precedent to any modification, restatement or renewal of such license. So this is a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 9, to determine all the things I just said. Based on the charge that partially nude persons using the licensed premises women's bathroom were secretly videotaped in violation of Chapter 140, Section 9 of the Massachusetts General Laws, in violation of Section A 14 of the town's prepared food sales regulations. The notice of this violation in hearing is, was dated June 13th, 2018, was delivered by hand and by mail to the licensee's address and by mail to the licensee's owner and manager, Andy Chung, at his residential address. It's Exhibit 1 to this hearing and is incorporated by reference into the minutes of this hearing. This hearing is being recorded by our recording secretary. First, who's here to present the case in support of the charge?
Patricia Correa, First Assistant Town Counsel.
And is anyone here representing the licensee?
My, my name is Mei Hui Hu. I represent the licensee.
Are there any exhibits to be marked at this time?
There are the exhibits that are currently before the Board. There are no additional exhibits from the town at this time, but I would like to just bring to your attention Development before this hearing, which is that Ms. Attorney Hui Hu. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Mei Hui.
Mei Hui Hu. Was retained by the new manager of the business, who is the former partner of Mr. Chung. The business filed with the Secretary of State's Office today, changes in the officers, change in the resident agent to Mr. Chung's partner. Mr. Chung is now not named as an officer. I understand from Attorney Hu that he is still a 50% owner of the business. But she has just been retained and is, has some information for the Board tonight, but not full information for the Board tonight. We do have the two detectives here to testify. We can present the town's case. We could adjourn to another date to continue the proceeding, or we could adjourn to a new date to present the whole case, but we do have the two detectives here currently.
I'm thinking while we, yeah, while we have everyone, everyone here, let's hear the case and then we can continue it if that's what's called for.
Okay.
So let's do that.
Okay. So the exhibits that you have before you that have been already marked are the notice of violation, which Chair Wischinsky just referenced. You have an Exhibit 2, which is the Brookline Police Department report dated June 7th, 2008, that was filed by Detective Brian Sheehy, who is here tonight. We have Exhibit 3, which is the Weston Police Department report dated May 8th, 2018, that was acquired, that was given to Sergeant Detective Matt McDonald and he will explain that tonight. We have Exhibit 4, which is the Massachusetts Secretary of State's Office business summary, just to show who the registered agent was. We served on the registered agent and clearly they received the notice because we have a representative here tonight. Exhibit 5 is an email confirming hand service on the business. Exhibit 6 is the Brookline District Court online docket showing that there are criminal charges pending against Andy Chung related to the conduct that's at issue tonight. Exhibit 7 is the license itself. So what I propose to do is to bring Sergeant McDonald to the podium to begin his testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you please state your full name?
Matthew McDonald.
And your position?
I'm a detective sergeant with the Police Department.
And how long have you been a member of the Police Department?
Since January of 2005.
Did the restaurant Tam China come to your attention fairly recently?
Yes, it did. First in the month of April, April 10th.
And how did that occur?
On April 10th, I was contacted by Sergeant Detective Boehner from the Weston Police Department, who informed me that they had an ongoing investigation, which they believed may have a linkage to Brookline in a particular restaurant here in Brookline, Tam China, at 423 Harvard Street.
And what else did he tell you of anything?
He informed me that they had an ongoing investigation in which they executed a search warrant at the residence of who they believed to be the owner or one of the owners of Tam China, Mr. T. Ping Chung. They had conducted a search warrant in which they seized a number of electronic devices, including cell phones and iPads, as well as cameras. And then they processed that evidence, which included forensic analysis conducted by the Middlesex County Sheriff's Department Forensic Analysis Unit, in particular, a Sheriff Schwab, I believe is his name. From a number of those files from those devices, they believed there were recordings of individuals depicted within the restaurant. And that is because they had knowledge that Mr. Chung was a restaurant owner throughout their investigation, as well as through interviews with his family members during their investigation, during the execution of the search warrant, et cetera.
Did you receive any kind of photo or picture from Weston Police Department?
Yes, we did. On May 16th, Detective Brian Sheehy, who will speak, I believe, picked up evidence discs from Sheriff Schwab. And after May 16th, we then began a review of the evidence that was provided to us.
And did you view any of the footage that was provided from the sheriff's office?
Yes, I did. And prior to that, also on April 10th, I had received a photo or a few photos of the bathroom that they believed was at the restaurant Tam China. And on April 10th, I assigned a couple plainclothes detectives to go to that business in undercover capacity, in which they viewed the bathrooms there and confirmed that they were the same bathrooms due to the background, particular detail in the tiles, as well as other items within the bathrooms, such as a stack of chairs, a mop bucket, et cetera. And that was on April 10th, the first day we received any information about the, the investigation.
And to what extent did you personally review the videotape footage that you acquired from the sheriff's department?
I reviewed it, the majority of it, majority of it, between May 16th and June 7th with Detective Sheehy. I can't say I reviewed it all, but he most definitely reviewed all of the video evidence.
And can you just very generally say what you saw on the video?
There were hundreds of video files, which depict women within the bathroom in states of nudity, mostly in the capacity of them going to the bathroom. There are close-ups of female genitalia while they're going to the bathroom, while they're cleaning themselves after, after going to the bathroom. Different angles from various different dates from the video files that we received.
After reviewing the footage, what happened next?
If I could just add one thing, from reviewing the video files, the majority that I viewed and probably all of them that Detective Sheehy viewed, it's clear that nobody in the videos has any knowledge that the video cameras were within the bathroom.
Why do you say that?
They never make eye contact with the video cameras that were present. And further on in the investigation, one individual that we identified also confirmed that she had no knowledge of them.
What happened after you completed the review of the video files?
So on June 7th, or shortly before then, within a few days before that, we had reviewed all the video files. We cataloged them by who we believed was the same individual depicted in multiple dates of the videos. And we organized them in that fashion and in chronological order. And we wanted to wait till the completion of the review of the videos, in the event that we did have an opportunity to speak to who we believed to be the suspect, who was Mr. T. Ping Chung.
Did you go to the restaurant at some point?
Yes, we did. On June 7th, we went to the restaurant.
And what happened next?
Our intention at the restaurant was to speak to the manager or the owner who was present in order to assist us with identifying people who may be depicted in the videos. I can say, due to the frequency of the videos, well, some of the individuals depicted in the videos, we did believe that it was a possibility, some of the people depicted may be employees of the business and also patrons of the business. So on June 7th, we went to the business. As we were about to enter outside, we observed who we believed to be Mr. Chung walking in. We then walked in behind him, identified ourselves as Brookline detectives, informed him why we were there, that we were not there to conduct an interview of him, due to his already legal representation out of Weston on that legal matter. And then we just informed him that we would be seeking his assistance in trying to identify anybody depicted in the videos. And that included being able to speak freely with his employees during the course of their employment or any patrons that we may have recognized during that time.
Did you recognize anybody on the premises?
Yes, we did. In addition to Mr. Chung, we did recognize one individual, an employee of the business. And they were recognized from the viewing of the videos. Specifically, this employee was depicted in approximately, I can say at least as of right now, 15 videos in a state of nudity in that fashion within the bathroom.
Did you speak with her?
Yes, we did. We spoke with her, we identified her, also informed her why we were there, the nature of the investigation. We showed her some photos and confirmed that, after she identified herself in a number of the photos, we confirmed that through her own words, that she had no knowledge of it, nor did she give any sort of consent to be videotaped. of it, nor did she give any sort of consent to be videotaped in that fashion at that location.
Thank you. I think I'd like to conclude my questioning and offer the board the opportunity to ask questions, and also the business's attorney the opportunity to ask some questions.
Any questions from the board? So, we'll give the business's attorney.
May I ask?
Come to the microphone, please.
Yes. Okay, all right, no problem.
And bring the mic.
Thank you. How are you doing, Detective Sergeant?
Not bad, yourself?
Thank you, I'm well. I just wanted to go back to your testimony and ask a few questions, so that we can have some clarity to what you testified to. I think I want to first point to Exhibit Three. Would you please identify, thank you, would you please identify to the members of the board what it is?
Exhibit Three is a supplemental police report from the Weston Police Department.
And could you let us know the date that was entered, basically, the date that was prepared?
I personally don't know, but the paper reflects entered on May 8, 2018.
In other words, May 8 of 2018, when this police report was generated in the town of, by the sheriff detective of town of Weston, this preceded your investigation on the premises on June 7?
No, this would be, well, preceded June 7, but it didn't precede the investigation, which we became aware of on April 10.
Absolutely. And so, when you started your investigation back in April, this is one of the material that was presented to you and made part of the material that you investigated?
Initially, in April, this was not presented to me, just verbal specifics of the case from the detective sergeant from Weston.
The verbal specifics, would you please let me know what verbal specific? Does it include who made those videotapes that were presented to the Brookline Police Department?
It includes who possessed them and who admitted to those devices belonging to them.
Basically, there was some basis from which you can establish an idea of who the prime suspect is?
In my opinion, yes.
Would you please identify who would be the prime suspect?
In my opinion, from all the information that I'm armed with from this investigation, it would be Tsipeng Chung.
Is anywhere in any of the police report, or any of your investigation, that the name Tai Shang Ying ever appeared in any of the records?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you know who Tai Shang Ying is?
I don't, but my guess is that he is another owner of the business.
In any way, during your investigation, did you have to look into whether there is a pattern or any kind of policy that was instituted by the China Tam Restaurant, Inc., to videotape patrons?
No, I did not, but from my own knowledge of the law, it would be illegal to be conducted within a bathroom.
Absolutely. I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Perhaps we could have Detective Sheehy come up now?
Sure.
Good evening, would you please state your name?
Good evening, my name is Brian Sheehy.
What is your position?
I'm a detective with the Brookline Police Department.
And how long have you been with the Brookline Police Department?
I've been a police officer since November of 2014, and a detective since January of this year.
Have you been involved with the investigation into Andy Chung and Tam China?
Yes, ma'am.
And what was your first involvement?
On April 10, as the detective sergeant had mentioned, he relayed to me some information regarding the possibility that videos were being made of patrons using the restroom at Tam China, 423 Harvard Street. Under his direction, I was partnered with Detective Julie McDonald. We went to the bathroom in undercover capacity as patrons, comparing what we had seen from the still photos taken from the videos in question, to what the bathroom actually looked like. Through that, we were able to confirm that the bathroom in the video and the bathroom in the restaurant were one and the same. And we were also able to confirm that, at that time, there were no longer any recording devices that we could detect.
Did you have any communications with the Middlesex Sheriff's Office?
I did. I was put in contact with Deputy James Schwab of the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office. He works in the computer forensic analysis unit. I was put in touch with him because through the Weston PD investigation, he'd come to possess the computer evidence seized at Mr. Chung's house.
And did you come into possession at some point of video footage from the Middlesex Sheriff's Office?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain in detail what led up to that?
Through the course of our investigation, as I said, we were able to determine that the bathroom from the still images in the videos was the same as what we had here in Brookline. I was in contact with Deputy Schwab. I went up to their facility up in Chelmsford and downloaded a selection of files, which they had parceled out for us, separate from the Weston investigation. So, I came into, I came to possess the videos they believed to have been created here in Brookline.
And how did you actually physically come into possession of the footage? What did you do?
So, Deputy Schwab, to the best of my knowledge, is still in possession of the physical devices that were seized in the Weston home. What I have is a digital copy of all the video files, organized by which device, from which they came, and I have them on an external hard drive.
And that was from the Middlesex Sheriff's Office?
Correct.
Did you view the footage?
I did.
How much of the footage did you view?
I viewed all the video and photo evidence that was contained on the hard drive.
And generally, can you describe the footage?
Yes, as my supervisor had explained, it seemed to depict unsuspecting women, various states of undress, using the restroom for either changing their clothes, or primarily for using the toilet facilities within the bathroom.
Okay. And did you visit Tam China a second time in June?
On June 7.
Okay. Can you describe that visit?
Yes, ma'am. I proceeded to the restaurant with Detective Sergeant McDonald, in an attempt to seek assistance from the management in identifying any of the patrons, or possibly employees, that were depicted in the videos. As we approached, just before us, Mr. Chung, whom I recognized from his registry photo and a wanted flyer put up by Weston PD regarding his other case, he was entering the restaurant before us. As we heard earlier, we spoke to him, made it clear that we were not there to interview him regarding the current case, also with respect to his current pending case in Weston. And we were able to relay that to him. And in the process, I was able to recognize one individual who had been depicted in the videos numerous times.
And was the depiction of the individual, did it show her in a state of undress?
There were numerous videos depicting states of undress, including changing clothes, or also close-up shots, including buttocks, genitalia area, while she was using the restroom.
And did you speak with her?
We did. We pulled her outside to speak with her more privately, and advised her of the reason we were there. We let her know the nature of the investigation, and asked her if she recognized her face from any of the images which were cropped out of the videos.
And you had photographs of those with you?
That's correct. We brought all the photographs that the sergeant detective had described, and I showed her the ones that I believed to be her. During the course of our interview with her, I was able to view a necklace she was wearing in one of the photographs, that she happened to be wearing at the current time, which was photographed as well for our investigation.
And what did she tell you in terms of her knowledge of the surveillance?
So, we specifically asked her if she'd ever given anybody permission to record her in that fashion, or if she had any knowledge that somebody had, and she said, absolutely not, she did not.
Did you review file properties for the surveillance as you reviewed the footage?
I did. Each file had a unique name, apparently generated by a computer, much like a serial number. So, in any videos that I was able to extract a facial image, or some other distinct way of identifying the patron, I would compare that to a forensic report, which was also attached electronically. Within the contents of that electronic report were what we believed to be the property files with date and time created.
And what did you observe in terms of the date and time of the footage?
The videos that I possessed in the investigation seemed to have started June 2015, and ended February of 2018, sporadic points, different time periods.
I'm going to show you what's been marked as Exhibit Two. Can you say what that is?
That is a redacted copy of my initial police report.
Thank you. I do not have any further questions, do the, does the board?
Any questions from the board? The business's attorney?
I just have, Detective Sergeant, I have just two follow-up questions. One is, on June 7, when you went to the business premises on Harvard Street, were you able to find any kind of camera, or any kind of recording devices in the bathroom?
No.
And the video footages that you reviewed, what are their approximate dates? Can you, is it fair to say that they all predate April of 2018?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
Okay.
So, that is the town's case, you have the exhibits. I would point out to you in particular that the Weston Police Report, Exhibit Three, notes the difference in name, that Mr. Chung is known as Andy Chung, and that is the person who's on the license. So, I think that perhaps at this point, maybe we give the business's attorney the opportunity to update the board about what is happening.
Okay, and then I'd like to take some public comment, anyone from the public who wishes to speak about this. But sure.
Could I?
Yeah.
Patty, could I ask a question about the Weston Police Department? A lot of the report is redacted, so I'm not sure why the Weston Police were going to Mr. Chung's house.
So, that is in connection with a different criminal matter that has also received some press, so you may find some articles about that, but that is not something that is presented as part of this case?
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes. The Middlesex DA's office issued a press release about a different criminal matter involving Mr. Chung.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I just wanted to first identify myself. I'm an attorney, but mostly, in this difficult situation, I need to let the board know who I represent. It's important for me today, right now, to represent the business, but at the same time, this is a partnership. It's a 50-50 business. The 50% of the share is owned by Mr. Andy Chung, who's not here today, and who is the prime suspect, knowing that he is still under investigation, knowing that there are still many cases of, you know, shocking, shocking cases that are under criminal investigation. There is another 50% that's owned by Mr. Tai Shang Ying, whose name I mentioned a couple times earlier. He is the innocent shareholder. He is, he's known as Chef Ying over the 20 years in the Brookline area where he runs the restaurant, with Andy Chung. Chef Ying came in yesterday, hired me, and I was not even given the notice. This notice was sent correctly to the registered agent, registered agent of the corporation, which is Mr. Andy Chung. But Mr. Chung is a resident of Weston, and he no longer come to the restaurant anymore after the day that he was escorted away on June 7. So, my client did not have a copy of this notice, and I was just given this about an hour ago. And I was able to talk to the town's attorney, and I know the severity of today's hearing. I was here, was prepared, at first, I was prepared to hear, to let the board know that we are taking steps, you know, with the aftermath of what's going on, and the most shocking betrayal and unbelievable situation, outraged situation. But still, Mr. Chef Ying still need to pick up pieces and, you know, keep the business going, because then he realized that, over 20 years, focusing in the kitchen is not enough. Andy Chung basically took care of everything else, and now he realized he has to take on everything, and he realized that he has to pay rent, he has to pay eight employees, making sure that the business can at least meet the day-to-day operation expenses. I was able to talk to Andy Chung's attorney, his criminal attorney, Frank Santizzi. He represented to me, although I was shocked, it was not true, that maybe there's some misunderstanding, that Mr. Andy Chung, part of the condition of his, he's out on bail after the hearing two weeks ago at the Brookline District Court. Part of the condition of his bail is that he is not allowed to go within 100 yards of the restaurant, which, according to the district court docket, is not true. So, I need to talk to Mr. Frank Santizzi. See, that's the part of thing, I don't know why that was misrepresented to me, or maybe there's some misunderstanding. But back to the point, where I'm here to present a surety, basically, to the board, to say, this has nothing to do with Chef Ying, this has nothing to do with the corporation in general. It's that Andy, he took care, Mr. Chung took care of everything over the years, but what he did in private, it's really shocking. Nobody could have known and could have prevented it. But given that, it is still a privilege to hold a C V license, to see, to hold an alcohol license. The restaurant premises is considered a public domain. We need to make sure that it's safe. We need to make sure that nothing like this would happen at all. So, I'm at the quadrant, I don't know what kind of measure that I can present to the court today, right now, to say, you know, even though he's a shareholder, but he's no longer here, and somehow we can make sure he'll never come close to the restaurant. So, I'm here actually just to say that we're willing to do whatever we can, given that we need to keep the restaurant going, at least for a couple weeks, or maybe a month, until at least we know how to wind down the business. As of this morning, we had Mr. Chung resign from all officers' position, from director's position. Right now, the registered agent is Chef Ying, he is the sole officer, sole manager, sole director. His responsibility is to getting the business appraised, talking to accountant, and figure out how to buy Mr. Chung's share out, if there is any value at all, at all. And this is important, because we're looking at potential civil penalty, civil liabilities based on Mr. Chung did personally. So, we need to, we need some time to figure this out. That's one aspect of it. And that's why I cannot just come in today and say, you know, Mr. Chung is no longer a shareholder. I can't do that, because statistically, there are steps I need to go through, there appraisal to be done, accounting to be done. And second of all, Mr. Ying is also interviewing potential managers, who is fluent in English language, could actually do, you know, take care of the front of the business. And he just told me today that he has rent to pay, he has eight employees to make sure they're paid as well. eight employees to make sure they're paid as well. If, you know, there's a victim in this case, I think Chef Ying is one of them. But I'm not trying to present any kind of excuse to say, you know, he has no responsibility for what happened. At the minimum, he need to say he needs to work harder and, you know, more diligently to show to the community that he is responsible. He is a responsible business owner, he's a responsible, at least, you know, give an explanation of how everything is wound up. And there's one more thing I think that is very important, is that not only Mr. Ying was not personally involved in any of the police report, none of this is connected to him, but also, the restaurant itself, Tam Restaurant, China Restaurant, Inc., you know, has no, is not under investigation whatsoever in connection with all these crimes. In the meantime, I understand the community, even though the community is outraged, but still, we have many community member here come out to show support for us, because the restaurant is actually still the go-to restaurant for kosher restaurant, for, actually, it's just, I'm not an expert in this, and that's also a kosher restaurant, it's also a glad kosher restaurant, and has 20 years history in that part of Brookline. It would be a shame to close it down and try to, you know, open up something similar. I don't think that's going to be easy to be done. I think it will be a loss to the community if we can't find a way to make this work. But I understand, any kind of sort of probation that the board would allow us to have will come with some kind of security measure, making sure that, one, this, Mr. Chung will never come close to the restaurant, and two, you know, he's in, no way, in any shape or form, involved in the restaurant operation. That's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? I know Mr. Rabbinowitz, so I'll recognize Mr. Rabbinowitz, then Mr. Burstein, and then I'll take a comment from anyone else who wishes. Yep. And I'll just ask, when you speak, start by identifying yourself.
Stanley Rabbinowitz, Constable Town of Brookline, as well as many of the departments that I work with, and I want to explain and have a few minutes to let people know both sides of the story. And I want to commend the selectmen for choosing the people that have now been able to discover and find what wonderful detectives and the wonderful police we have to locate a situation that was unbelievable, that was not put before the public at all, that nobody went into these basements and went into the bathrooms and went into the place and went ahead and not find what was happening there. I, myself, on my watch, want to explain many things that we should be doing and things that we have done in the past and have been very successful. I have some well-known people in the community that are well-appreciated and done so much in life that it's unimaginable for any of us in the Jewish community to have such a thing happen, because we want to disconnect from a person that did this, a Chinese person, but we can't blame all the Chinese. There are many, many more good Chinese, and we have to stand by the good ones and help the good ones and not make this town into a way that we're hurting, hurting badly. Here is a man that went ahead and went after his wife to defeat and made her miserable. I went into the restaurant, and she was leaving, and she was crying in her serex, and she was yelling at me and saying that my children can't even go out in the street. To somebody to turn their wife into a situation like that is unbearable. And I want to introduce somebody who I know for many years, and I want to go back into the history so you people will understand exactly. I came out of the hospital, but I came into time that would be helpful. I want, come up, sir. I want to let you know about this gentleman who I've known for maybe over 20, 30 years, and I want to tell you exactly what happened and how I got to know him. And I'm counting on him to the point of view to bring the restaurant in the right order. What happened was, I was president of the Young Israel of Brookline. When I was president of Young Israel, I got a call, and the call I received was two gentlemen from New York, two Chinese people wanted to put in a kosher Chinese restaurant. So I said, they asked me if the community would accept it, and I said, sure. I said, no reason why not. So they opened up, and it was called Shalom Anan, and it was down in the village when it was opened. And people were coming in there, not because of anybody else, but because of this gentleman. This man knows how to make Chinese food that nobody else can realize it. And the people were coming not to see these crazy things that are unbelievable and to hurt the community and hurt the workers that are there. There's some good workers and good people. And like I say, I commend the detectives, and also the chief, acting chief and the rest of them. In fact, the prosecution and so forth is being done by a district attorney who is well-known and well-appreciated and well-comparative. No better district attorney than Michael Morrissey, and we're proud to have him in this town. And the same thing is protecting people in this town, and we got to look to do this. But again, I go back to the issue. When I got to know him, and he worked in the town later on, as you probably know, rents are going up, 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 everything's going up, and people are hurting in this town because of the rents going sky-high. But it's not mentioned that way. People are saying, put up more condos. I don't know why we need so many condos, but what can I tell you? But the reasons that I'm speaking above and telling you from the bottom of my heart that this gentleman is the man that's completely innocent, you have people in that restaurant that are losing their jobs. Some people left already. I see both sides, but for the sake of one person who is a bad lemon, a bad apple, no better than he could be to go ahead and destroy a business that the Jewish community was asking and pleading to have, but under the circumstance, these people aren't coming back to that restaurant, because they have to be reassured that this best, this restaurant will be in the first-class shape and protected in any possible way. And there's no better departments, even if I have to pay myself for privacy, to make sure we have this as protected, but at the same time, we call upon the Brookline Health Department, which is top-grade all over the country. You don't find these kind of people being appointed by the selectmen. We also have, which I wanted to say, being a member of the Board of Appeal, I dealt with our people who are the kindest, the nicest, knowledgeable people in the building department. We want people to come in and share with us and to see whatever goes on that we intend to renovate. And on my watch, I will put up whatever I have to make sure that the security of this town is, again, well-protected. But as I say, we call on the police, we call on everyone in this town, whatever can be possible, to let us continue on and let us come back to you and give you a full report of exactly everything that would be taking place. The name is changed, that's positively. I know I got the cooperation, because this gentleman is not only a person that can, knows how to cook and knows how to make Chinese food, that is unbelievable. I feel that this Chinese, might say so, even if I have to pay for it, should do things in the community to make it a better community, as well as I'm saying to you before the board, that I'm willing to go forward and make sure that people that do not have the money to afford a good decent meal, I want them to write a letter to me, and I will see to it that people will be helped the same way as we need to help this particular situation that was unbearable and anything happened. But as you probably know, again, I come back to myself, when I was president from the Young Israel, at the same time, we had a tragedy. And the tragedy we had was the whole synagogue was burnt down to the crisp. The very first call I got was from Ted Kennedy. Ted calls me, says, Stanley, he says, I hear what happened, I'm coming right down. He's the first man that came in to see what was happening. And he said, we build, but there was a gentleman who done so much for the community and so much for people that worked. There's a gentleman here by the name of Aaron Furstein, and he was in the White House, he was honored by Congress, he was honored in everything, because he went ahead and did more than anybody else could possibly do in paying the people that worked for him, even though there was no, building there was burnt down. It was one thing after the other. In the Jewish community, we've been really hurt badly. And so I'm not only speaking for the Jewish community, I'm speaking for whatever I had in the past, because I was also chairman of the Brookline Housing. And the Brookline Housing at the time, people never knew this, because I never spoke out as much as I do now, when I see innocent people being hurt and people losing their jobs, and I have to speak out, because we need to help whatever we can, and this was my motto. So I went ahead, I went ahead, and as I went and I spoke at that time to see, Brookline Housing was in the worst shape possible. People were going ahead and taking, that worked for the Brookline Housing, they were taking cars, naturally, that they're allowed to, tax money to put in the vehicles that belonged to Brookline, but they were taking their own vehicle. This is documented, this is in paper, this was written down, all these things were being done, that they were taking gasoline that belonged to the taxpayer. And when the selectmen heard all these things going, they came to me and they said, Stanley, we want you to take on the responsibility, chairman of board of Brookline Housing. I said to them, I'd only be too glad. There were a lot of big people that wanted that job. I know for a fact that there used to be a representative, his wife called me-
Mr. Rabbinowitz, you know, a lot of people want to talk-
And wanted to take it. Pardon me?
A lot of people would like to speak, so I appreciate the history.
I know, but I just want to say what goes on in the town, and that I was fortunate to make it happen to clear. I have to have the time. I hear everybody else spoke. Everyone before me spoke for a long time. It wasn't just five minutes, but they spoke a long time. I had the patience, but I have to give my heart not to see people being destroyed. So I'm saying, even though I'm going a little further, I know some people give up their work, but I know the town council, people representing, also had a long time to speak. We agree what she's saying. Everything that happened was true. We don't deny that. We say you're doing a great job, but let me go back to the situation. When it happened in Brookline Housing, at the same time, the people were taking money from Brookline Housing, the money was being distributed like it was a bank giving out money. And so when I got in, I changed it. There was no, the infighting with the board, I brought the board together, and they all voted at that time in a way of getting us now a new director and a new assistant director. From then on, I went in the last minute, it was the last second, I had three weeks to put up a building, and I put up the building that was right there on Harvard Street, and it was called the Kickem Apartments. Why was it Kickem Apartments? Because John Kickem was on the board, and the children came to me and they pleaded-
Mr. Rabbinowitz, what does that have to do with the restaurant?
What it has to do is that I worked my heart out.
Right, I know.
And I worked to make this town a better town to live in.
Right, I agree.
So I'm just saying, you people have been very cooperative. When it happened, the Burchery went and had a fire, you people were there to help us build. I'm asking you to give us time to rebuild, let us go forward.
Okay.
I was successful, and I promise that I will.
We hear you.
I'd like to call on Aaron Furstein, he has a few words to say, so that with a complete separation, completely separated from one to the other separation of whatever went on to that man that I tell you, mental, whatever the story, separate from the Jewish community, which I leave you with a last word, and the last words that I'm saying now is, what is kosher? Kosher means to the point of view is clean, but it also brings in many other avenues. And the other avenue is that the animal that's being slaughtered is being slaughtered in a way that does not bring any pain to the animal. So there's nothing wrong with kosher. We're trying to live that way. We want to separate the kosher end of it, as the Jewish people do, and I beg you to give us a chance to go forward.
Okay, we hear you.
And we appreciate the fact that you're willing to step forward and help us resolve this issue.
Pardon me?
Okay, Mr. Furstein, then Mr. Burstein.
Okay. I'm very happy to be here. I was born here in Brookline on 84 Crono Shield Road 92 years ago. And I was on Beach Road for 60 years, and on Kent Street for 30 years. And I'm very proud that I live here in Brookline, and I hope my old age will be spent here as well. Okay, this unfortunate story, I just want to give you some of my thoughts. And it'll be very brief. And I'll just read from a letter that I sent to Stanley Rabbinowitz, and all the, all the thoughts in this letter. "It is well-known that the religious Jewish community in Brookline abhors sexual deviancy of any kind, which is in accordance with the sexual restrictions of the Hebrew Bible. The community and its leadership had not the faintest suspicion of any kind of the problem existing at Tom China. We liked the rest of it, and we supported it." That's the fact. "The owner-manager gave us no hint of his shocking and horrible problem. He now has been caught and will be punished with life in jail, together with loss of his business, his family, and his name. We now ask the Town of Brookline to grant the community the just right to find a new owner who will keep the restaurant open, save the jobs of the innocent workers, and satisfy the needs of the Jewish community. Sincerely, Aaron Furstein."
Thank you. Mr. Burstein? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Woszinski and the whole select board. I am Michael A. Burstein. As you know, I'm a library trustee and a town meeting member from Precinct 12. I am here to say some similar things, I think, to what Mr. Rabbinowitz and Mr. Furstein said, but I hope to keep it as brief as possible. I first do want to begin by expressing my extreme gratitude to Sergeant Matthew McDonald and to Detective Brian Sheehy. I've always been very pleased with the police department we have here in Brookline, and this is a very difficult situation, obviously, for the Jewish community, for the entire community of Brookline, I should say. And I'm glad that they were able to find out what they did in their investigation, although obviously, I'm not glad about what has happened. The points that I just want to make to the select board, because I know that, you know, there's a lot that you have to consider, and there's a lot of possible options that you can take. It's what people have said before, but there is in Brookline, and I don't talk about this a lot, although I'm obviously, you know, one of the members of our government who identifies as this. I am one of the Orthodox Jews, I'm modern Orthodox, and my family keeps strictly kosher. And those of us who do keep kosher have unfortunately a limited number of restaurants that we are able to go to in order to enjoy. And these places actually, to some extent, become community centers. It is a truism that many of us actually know the owners and managers of these restaurants. I don't know how it works, or I, you know, when I was growing up, I was not as kosher as I am now. I don't know how it works, and- as I am now, I don't know how it works in the current world, but I don't think that, you know, the casual diner knows the community of the people there. You know, when we go out to eat at one of the restaurants like Pure Cold Press, we know Hayam, who owns it. When we go to Cafe Alot, we know Michael and Levana, who, who own and run the restaurant. You know, in a way, these people are family. When, when Shalom Hunan first, and then when Tom China started, there, there's something very nice about a restaurant where, where the owners themselves, the people running it, were not actually part of the Jewish community, but they're willing to, you know, go to the trouble of running a kosher restaurant. There's a lot that you have to do to certify that the restaurant is kosher and that our particular small community will be able to be serviced by that. Tom China has been, as I say, sort of a community center like that. When you, if you, you will, you, you see people there that you know from the community all the time, you say hello, you show up, little hard for people to go on private dates, but you know, that's how it is. And it is, it's a sad fact also, I mean, we, my family, my wife and I and my two daughters, we got to know, I, I don't know, Mr. Chung, I don't know how to refer to him now, and, and it is very, it's, it's a very discombobulating to just kind of see where you are at this. The community obviously, you know, does not want to necessarily support somebody who is under a cloud, but at the same time, we don't want to see the people who work at the restaurant go out of work. You know, it's not just a question for us, it's also a question for them, would like it to be a place that, that would stay kosher and keep being good for this community, for these people who live in Brookline. I will tell you, it draws people from outside of Brookline. I remember a few years ago when we had the Democratic National Convention in Boston, I think every kosher-keeping Democrat in the country was showing up at Tom China. And the fact is that we, you know, the, the restaurant also actually does serve a non-kosher-keeping clientele, something that you might not necessarily think about. I've known people who are completely allergic to shellfish, who have found, this was the only restaurant they could go to, because the only restaurant they could be sure of that there's no shellfish anywhere that might contaminate anything. And of course, the restaurant doesn't serve any pork either. So it is a, it, it does serve people beyond the kosher community, but the fact is that it is something that we value as a community. It is literally the only kosher Chinese restaurant in the Boston area. We would hope that in some way it can be salvaged and saved in a way that will benefit the people who work there, the, the, the co-owner who does not, is, is not under a cloud, and I present that to you as a member of this community in Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Thank you very much, Chair, you know, Board, for seeing me. I was born in-
Your name?
Oh, I'm, okay. My name is Rhonda Ann Gerber. I am, I was born and raised here in Brookline, and I currently live in Rhode Island, and I travel from Rhode Island to come here to the Chinese restaurant, the kosher Chinese restaurant, with family, with friends, and I know people from all over in the southeastern area that come here to be able to eat the kosher food because there's no other kosher restaurant existing Chinese food. And, you know, it, with all said, that everybody had said, everything that has happened, the community has nothing to do with this one individual person. The community is a respectful community that serves Brookline, respects Brookline, respects everybody here, and I, who one day want to come back here very soon because I, I like it here, and I, I should say, I love it here, and to be able to bring my family, and I do have some members of my family that do live here. And I want to see this restaurant exist for the people of the community, for the people not to lose their jobs just because of one person that could ruin it for everybody. Why should one evil, bad person ruin it for good people? There's too many good people here that want this restaurant to exist, to support the, there's no place that people will be able to go out to eat and for special occasions, for birthdays, for anniversaries, for dating, you know, there's, you want people to be able to have something that they can go to, that they, they can feel that it's connected. It also serves a, it's profitable, you know, here in Brookline for, to exist because you have so many Jewish Orthodox people that only eat kosher. So I thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ira Axelrod. I've lived in the area for forty years, I'm very actively involved in the Orthodox Jewish community. I am affiliated with quite a few different organizations, but I do want to make it very clear that while a number of people have encouraged me to show up today to talk, I am not speaking on behalf of any organization for a very obvious reason. The tax laws say the organizations cannot materially try to influence legislation, which I guess to some degree this is. So on the one hand, yes, I'm a well-known activist, but I am not representing organizations. I am representing individual people, many of whom could not come, many of whom have looked to me because I'm kind of comfortable doing this kind of thing, I've done it before, I imagine I'll do it again. And by the way, I do apologize, I would usually be a little bit better dressed for the occasion, but today is my longest day in my business, and I had to pull away from my business quickly to get here. A lot of people were talking about what happened, long before it was front page in the tab. Bad news travels very quickly in the, in the religious Jewish community. And the reactions varied. I'm kind of well-known for being very blunt, maybe saying a few things that some people wouldn't want me to say, but I'm proud, at the end of the day, people know that I'm honest. There were a lot of different reactions. Certainly disgust, great disgust. You've gotten that from several of the other speakers. And frankly, I talk to men, I talk to women, and particularly, I imagine a lot of what was going through the minds of many of these women, what if I was in that bathroom? Yes, tremendous disgust. And yes, while thank God it wasn't somebody of our faith, it, it was disconcerting that it was in any way, shape, or form touching something that involved something, a religious Jewish function, maybe kosher food. Yes, it was a problem. And yes, there are some people who even if everything works, and this restaurant goes on forever, which I hope it does, say, at least in the short one, oh, I'm not going to come back there. That's human emotions. I got the willies, huh, huh, huh. There are people who are saying that, yes. There are other people who are saying, how can we lose this kind of restaurant? You know, being heavily involved, and professionally I'm involved in the food, the kosher food business and other areas, I can tell you, keeping kosher for Orthodox Jews is not a sometime thing. It is a one-hundred percent commitment. It's not hello, I'd like to go to a kosher restaurant today and a non-kosher restaurant tomorrow. That isn't the way we work. There are very few selections in Brookline, very few. And frankly, I'll give you a little insight into our community, there are different levels of koshers, believe it or not, and some which we do trust and some which we're a little cynical about. It just happens that Tom China is under the rabbinical supervision of the most widely respected kosher rabbinical supervisor in this area, who by the way, happens to be sitting right here, Rabbi Hamari. There are some of these quote-unquote kosher restaurants I wouldn't walk into. I'm proud to walk into Tom China for its kosher things. There's another problem too. You know, Jerusalem Pizza, Cafe Alot, Vitorio's Grill, all of these, by the way, under Rabbi Hamari, yeah, they're nice places, I've been to all of them, but you want a restaurant that's a nice restaurant, tablecloth on the table, place you can bring somebody from the business, your family. We have here in Brookline many people who come from non-religious families, where the parents are a little cynical, what did you get yourself into? And we want to be able to show, no, we have something nice. Comes to a kosher restaurant, Tom China is nice, and it's the only one. I understand that, fine, something happened terrible over there, but then again, it's analogous to if you would, you heard there was a murder in a house, and two years later, the house is up for sale, are you really going to not buy it if that is other, that house fits your needs? Yeah, people will say, yeah, I got the willies about it. Yeah, that's human emotion. But it's the same kind of thing here, something bad happened, but apparently, from all I've been hearing, this Andy who caused the problem will not be involved, assuming he is found guilty, and we're still in the American system, maybe with a smokeless fire, but he hasn't been found guilty yet, let's assume he has, he will be a guest of the government for a long time, certainly have nothing to do with this. Frankly, by not allowing this restaurant to go forth, who are you punishing? Besides the employees, which is a very interesting problem, you're punishing the community. What do we have to do with it? We're embarrassed by it. Don't punish the community. We've been punished enough with the embarrassment of what happened. We need a place that's nice, we need a place that's reliable. So I ask you to please separate the issues. Yes, yes. Andy gets what he deserves, presumably, and by the way, I'll give you a little extra something. Andy, besides this, in my opinion, is not a nice person. I had a run-in with him a couple of years ago, the last time I was there, and I said something to him that, rather politely, and he said, if you don't like it, don't come. I haven't come since. I am looking forward now that Andy is no longer in the picture, to going back. And I suspect there's a few other people feeling that way too. So please give us that opportunity, don't punish us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was informally introduced before, Rabbi Hamari. I give the kosher certification to the restaurants here in Boston. In Tom China, I've been working together with Andy and together with Ying for the past twenty years, and I knew them ever since they were in Shalom Hunan. It's been twenty-five years. All I need to, everybody said everything already, all I'd like to say is that Tom China is not just a restaurant that serves the Brookline community, the kosher community, but it's more like a New England thing, because there are people that are coming in from Sharon, from Worcester, they just come here to eat, because there's no other Chinese kosher restaurant, and Chinese food for Jews is almost like the filter fish. So it's, they can't live without it. And so, and besides that, I'd like to also mention that a lot of the takeouts happen at Tom China, and they go out to the college campuses, MIT regularly, Harvard, BU, Brandeis, all the college campuses, and we're talking about huge orders of, for two hundred, three hundred people every time. So, and there's nobody else who can do that. And Ying has, is a model person, I've known him for many, many years, and he's really, he can stand up to this, and he's honest and a good person. I, I don't have any doubts that he can do this job correctly. Besides that, the workers that are there, there's, like we mentioned before, aid workers, these are hard-working family people, they need their jobs. I have half a dozen cashroot supervisors that round the clock, that are making sure that everything is kosher. I don't want them to be without a job, and they're definitely victims, all these people were all victims. So we ask the board to please weigh in on everything that was said tonight, and please help the Jewish community.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Linda Galper, and I've been a homeowner on Gardner Road for forty-three years, and I've never come to a selectman meeting, and I'm happy now to be able to place your faces with the names of the selectmen. So I really don't have much to say and didn't prepare any comments, I just want to concur with all the comments that you've heard. As a family-keeping kosher, there are very few restaurants here for us to go out to. And Tom China, although Mr. Chung wasn't always the most friendly person, and yelled at me once because I wanted to change my seat, and then I didn't go back for a few weeks, but it is one of the few kosher restaurants that we have. I do not want my money in any way to support Mr. Chung, so if he is not involved in the restaurant and does not benefit from it financially, I would hope that our community can find a way to keep the restaurant going. So I hope that you'll give us some time to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Well, it's, it's clear to me that, well, I, I find the community response, especially after what's happened, just amazing, and is a testament to Mr. Ing. And I'm clearly, I think the business deserves some time to reorganize and get its act together.
Could I?
Sure.
I, I know you'd offered us the opportunity to ask a question before, Patty, but I, I would like to ask the officers, if I could, a question about their investigation, because I, I want, I think that, that this board and the community deserve to know the answer to this, and that is that, was there any indication in your investigation that anyone else was involved in the placing of these cameras? Were they, were they placed in locations that were accessible to Mr. Chung easily, and he didn't need help placing them, or was there any indication at all that any of the employees or other people involved in the restaurant were, were aware of this or involved?
To answer your question, we have no indication or evidence at this point that Mr. Chung had or needed any help. It kind of sounded like a, a two-part question as well, would he have needed any help? From our understanding, the vantage point from which the cameras were placed, they were low, they were at a point, either in generally two places, either across from the toilet, viewing somebody from a seated position where you could see from the head down to about the shin area, and the other most common vantage point was down low behind the toilet, looking up, without becoming too crass, with a very invasive viewpoint. In my opinion, he wouldn't have needed any assistance from anybody, and does that answer your question?
Yes, and, and the cameras were disguised in, I mean, obviously, it wasn't like somebody looked at a camera and thought, oh, that's a camera.
We, we don't believe that they were conspicuous. As part of the Western investigation, detectives there did seize more covert-style cameras, I believe, and I would offer that the, the appearance of the people in the videos doesn't indicate that they could have seen something as obvious as a camera, especially given the nature of what they were doing in that room and their expectation of privacy in a public bathroom like that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Green?
Following along that question, I think that there are a lot of innocent victims here, workers, the landlord, the community, but still, I think before, and I agree that we- And I agree that we have to come up with a plan that enable this restaurant to continue to serve that community and serve the people who work there. But, you know, that plan also has to include some assurance that, you know, people sort of notice what's going on around them. I have a hard time believing that the cleaning people, the people who put food in various places nearby the bathroom, other people would not have noticed something out of place. I mean, the cameras would have to be behind a wallboard, I assume. There must have been some construction that went into that. You know, maybe, you know, no one noticed, but I just have a hard time accepting that that is acceptable, that no one noticed cameras in what sounds to me like multiple locations. So, I mean, I guess, you know, my point is, is that I really need to see a plan that addresses the issue of whether people are observing what's going on around in the restaurant. Because I think it's just not credible that no one... That... Well, I mean, it's not... It's hard to believe that no one would have noticed something amiss over all these years, that these cameras were there taking pictures of people. And I just find that incredible.
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Green?
Yeah.
To my knowledge from the Weston report, without getting into too many details, it's not our case to discuss. Some of the recording devices did appear to be very intentionally concealed. I'm sure you're familiar with things like nanny cams and the types of objects a recording device can be placed in. As far as the multiple camera angles in the bathroom, it didn't appear to me that anywhere necessarily simultaneous. And, you know, as far as weighing some sort of a plan going forward, that's why we're here today. We have town-style government and public hearings for that. We can't really speak to that as the police department, but we can offer the evidence of the fact that, you know, they were definitely placed in there at numerous points over a period of nearly four years.
Is there... Well, I think the attorney for the applicant indicated that there were some plans in place to make... To ensure that Mr. Chung had no access to the property in the future. And I would want that to be very, very clear. And I'm certainly willing to grant the owner, Mr. Chung, the opportunity to make that happen. But I want to make sure that Mr. Chung will never set foot in that restaurant again.
One of the condition of his bail is that he not to... He not to come close to any of the victims. And I think that is a very general description of a prohibition. If he were not to come close to any victims, by that, does that mean that he's not allowed to come close to the restaurant? I think it means what it says. If the board will feel more comfortable, will find some more comfort in a more definite condition put onto the bail, I can certainly work with Mr. Chung's criminal attorney. He can voluntarily stipulate to additional condition on his bail. From a few times I've discussed with Attorney Santizzi, he seems to offer cooperation.
Yeah. I don't have any, you know, concerns that we can keep Chung away from the restaurant. I think that's easy to deal with. My concern is Mr... Is it Ying?
Yes, Mr. Ing.
Okay. I understand that he's... He doesn't speak English very well. So I think, you know, can you assure us that we'll have a manager who does speak English? And, you know, is specifically tasked with making sure that, going forward, there aren't any problems of this nature or any other nature at the restaurant to give the community some real assurance that when they go there, you know, they can feel safe and they can feel comfortable that, you know, they're getting what they're expecting to get from their experience.
Mr. Chung, who has left two weeks ago, he never came back. He is the designated manager, both food manager as well as alcohol manager. Technically, we're not supposed to sell alcohol. There's no manager there. So we are in a process of working very diligently to find someone. But in the interim, there are assistant managers, even though they are not named on our alcohol license application. But, you know, over the course of the operation, there's always somebody who is fluent in language, fluent in alcohol trainings, safe-serve training. But our goal is really to find someone who can actually... Named as a manager who is overseeing everything. But I'm not quite sure how quickly we can do that. I would say at least a couple of weeks before we can submit a application to appoint a new manager to take over the alcohol license. But even with that, with the process of hearing, it may take up to three months before we can have the ABCC approve our application.
Right.
I'm just brainstorming. I don't have a good plan here.
So everyone should be aware that ABCC, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, that's a state agency, has concurrent jurisdiction over the alcohol license. And they have begun a hearing process which is similar to this. So whatever this board does is something separate than what the ABCC is going to be doing. So if you're concerned about the health of the business going forward and making sure the business survives, you should be aware of what they're doing and show up at the ABCC hearing when that happens. And that would be downtown.
That took place last week already, and it was taken under advisement. We have not heard a decision yet.
Do they typically have... So the hearing has happened, and that's it?
We're just waiting for a decision. I think it's going to be at least some suspension. But I'm not quite sure...
Right.
...their position at this point.
So, Ms. Correa, what are our options here?
And by the way, so we're talking about the common victor license.
Correct. The food license.
So they could operate without a liquor license.
Correct.
Serving food.
Yes, correct, they can. So the options are similar to what you're accustomed to with any kind of license, including liquor licenses. And maybe there's just a need for more creativity about the option.
So what can we do to give the business some time and give us and the community assurance that Mr. Chung won't be on the premises while this is happening?
Well, any time after. So you could... Tonight, you could, if you wanted, choose to add a condition to the license that requires him not to be on the premises. Not... That requires the business law to permit him on the premises. You could... Or you could decide not to take action tonight and adjourn and come back with a sort of more comprehensive kind of plan. But that could be like a temporary condition that you could put on pending further review, for example.
So they can't operate, though, without a manager?
They can't sell alcohol without a manager.
Where they could operate the restaurant without a manager?
They can operate... I think... I believe, actually, our regulations require a manager, so they should...
So they can't operate...
There's alcohol, and then there's CV. I would have to confirm... I can confirm the CV regulations. I just don't recall if... Liquor does require a manager.
They'd want a manager anyway. That should be a condition.
So, you know, as long as Mr. Chung is not on the premises, you know, I'd... We don't want to punish the victims.
So I'm bothered by the fact that Mr. Chung remains a 50% owner. So I'm wondering, and this is going to be sort of framed as a question for Ms. Correa, if we can attach two conditions. One that says Mr. Chung shall not be on the premises between tonight and some future date. And a second condition that says we want to have some report on the potential reorganization of the business at a future date, at which point we can take some future action, as the board may find appropriate.
Yeah, I think you could add two conditions of that nature.
Okay.
And what about the issue of a manager? I mean, have you... Does the business have someone who could act as a manager? The acting manager, at least?
We have, so far, as far as I know, at least one lady who's worked there on and off. She is familiar with operations, so she can temporarily take it over. But still, you know, to officially name someone as manager, we need to submit our application.
Right, and there's a process for that. So is...
Let me just add, I just looked at the... I just looked at the prepared food regulations. There's not a requirement for a manager for the CV license, but there obviously is one for the liquor license.
Okay, so what we took...
I guess my concern is that there has to be someone in charge, even if they're not required. I think we should require that there be someone in charge who's responsible for, you know, monitoring what's going on.
For purposes of the CV license.
Right. And, for example, one of the things that that person should do or be responsible for is any necessary renovations to the bathrooms to make sure that, you know, whatever holes or whatever were there were removed.
I don't know if the business can speak to the construction of the bathroom. I don't know.
I mean, that's just an example. So there's a lot of things that someone needs to be in charge of overseeing, even if they're not required to have a manager. There has to be someone in charge, in place, to just make sure that things get done and that the community has some assurance that, you know, it's a safe place to go.
Well, and if there is some town correspondence that's necessary from the Health Department or the Building Department, we need to know who to talk to. So I think your point is well-placed. I've got three conditions that I'm going to propose, and we can work out the specific language. But first is that there be a manager, an agent... I'm not sure what the right term is. Appointed with the necessary paperwork filed with this board within seven days. That Mr. Chung not be permitted on the premises from the date of any vote that this board takes until... No future date set, just not be allowed on the premises. And we can go back and revisit that if we need to. And that, within the next 60 days, the... This board receive an update on the progress of reorganization of the ownership and management of the Tom China restaurant.
Okay.
I'm agreeable to those. They're perfectly fair.
Okay. Got it? Okay.
I just mentioned, in addition to Mr. Chung's prohibition from being on the premises, we should probably make sure he's not involved in any operational decisions, because you can do those remotely, I suppose.
I'll incorporate that into it.
And immediately. That's my immediate...
So in terms of number one, the manager? I mean, that would not... That would be for the CV license?
Correct. Not for the alcohol license, correct.
Well, I mean, it's not tied to the CV license. We're just saying that there needs to be someone in charge that can oversee the renovations, or, you know, work with the police, the Health Department, Fire Department. You know, someone in charge that we can talk to.
Yes, I just didn't want to confuse the term manager, because that's... There's a whole process for that. And so if we're using that term, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, I'm referring simply to the CV license. The alcohol license is a separate process from what we're talking about tonight.
If I may, I just want to...
Sure.
Stanley... I'm just sorry, I don't know his last name.
Mr. Ravneowitz.
But I volunteered to play as... To take over the supervision role until we submit an official application to name a manager to run the place.
I'm willing to make sure that bathroom is 1 billion, billion percent protected.
Okay.
And the department, I will have them also inspected.
You're the man, Mr. Ravneowitz.
And whoever else, I will also...
Careful what you want to do.
For whatever we can do to make this successful. And I do appreciate it, because I like running the people in town, and especially our detectives.
Okay.
They've done a hell of a great job, and we should commend them, as I did before, for the achievement on him. I honor him.
Okay. So three conditions. The manager, not the...
A point of contact.
Point of contact within...
And supervisor.
Yeah, right.
No involvement of Mr. Chung at all, and certainly not on the premises. And then 60 days, we... This board receives an update.
Do you want to... Do you have any comments to those... To that proposal?
And we will also have a new company and new DBA. We wanted to have a clean slate.
Okay.
And I think those timelines are doable. I really appreciate your consideration and your time.
Okay. So that's the motion, and...
So the plan in 60 days is an update? Is... Well, an update, but also sort of a business plan as to how they're going forward in terms of new manager and other things.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, this isn't part of the motion, but what I'm looking for is I want to see Mr. Chung removed from the ownership of the restaurant. And I want to know who the new owners are. And hopefully, at that point, there'll be a permanent agent, manager, on the CV license. And I think, if necessary, once we receive that information, we can schedule another hearing if we find it necessary and we feel the need to take action.
And some of these things require applications, like changing their name, doing business as, so paperwork.
Can I just review my understanding?
Sure, please.
Okay. Item number one is a manager be appointed by the business for purposes of the CV operations within seven days of today.
Correct.
Mr. Chung will not be permitted by the business on the premises or permitted to participate in the business operations. Start it as of today.
As of this evening, correct.
Okay. And we do not have an end date for that. That's going to be a permanent restriction pending any modification...
Correct.
...in the future. Within 60 days, this board will receive a report from the business about... With an update on the ownership and the management of the business.
Correct.
Okay. That's the motion. Hold those in favor of the motion. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, we still have some more business. So next up is BU Parking Garages. Thank you, Mr. Ravneowitz. Okay, so I presume you're Mr. Goram?
Yes, Thomas Goram, Associate Director for Occupational Health and Safety with Boston University.
Okay, if you can...
We still have business.
If you can take the discussion out to the hallway, that would... So we can continue. We'd really appreciate it. I suspect this one won't be as... Quite as interesting.
Contentious or as interesting? I hope not.
Okay. What's going on here?
So in our course of building the new Booth Theater, which is at 820 Commonwealth Ave... So in our course of building the new Booth Theater, which is at 820 Commonwealth Ave., we discovered that we needed, through our regulatory review, needed licenses for garages to store gasoline in that building. And then we came to discover that we didn't have current licenses for our other eight buildings on Inbrook Line that have garage licenses, or that would need, that have current active garages in them. So from 730, 748 Comm Ave., 808 Comm Ave., buildings that have been in existence and been functioning as garages for 75, 50 to 75 years or even longer, some of them. So we're just starting the process to make sure we're legal and in compliance with the state regulations.
So there's no, this doesn't represent any changes in operation, location of garages, any change in the amount of gasoline on the premises?
Yes, they require us to count vehicle spaces and 20 gallons per vehicle space, which most vehicles no longer have 20 gallon gas tanks in them. But back in 1970, when this state law came into being, that was the average gas tank size, I guess.
Okay.
No wonder they were so big.
Yes.
My only question is, frequently in these types of garages, there's a diesel tank for a backup generator, and I don't see any notation for oil, so is that...
There is no, none of these facilities have backup generators in them. They are all supplied by natural gas. Everything's, we're converting, you know, heating systems to natural gas for a variety of reasons, so there are no backup generators in these buildings. They're not critical buildings for us. They're not dormitories, they're not clinical, you know, critical laboratory space, things of that nature.
Yeah, okay.
Most of that's in Boston.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, the university actually does have a permit for 808 Commonwealth Ave., and it was acquired in 2002.
808?
Yep.
Okay, well, so you had one...
Our facilities, I've been there since 2013, so, but in our records, we couldn't find it, so...
We found it.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing.
Yes.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Okay. I see none. So any other discussion? So I'll move that we approve the application of the trustees of Boston University, represented by Thomas Goram, Associate Director, Campus Clinical Safety, the keeping, storage, and use of gasoline of the flammables at nine, separate parking garages structures on Commonwealth Ave. and Dummer Street. And this would totals out to 14,480 gallons of gasoline and the tanks of 724 automobiles, also 300, 6,000, 3,620 quarts of motor oil in 724 automobiles, and 724 gallons of antifreeze in the same number of automobiles. So all those in favor of...
Does that include window washer fluid?
They didn't...
That's non-hazardous.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And we should note, we should note that the fire department reviewed these applications and saw no reason to deny them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going for Chinese food.
Kosher Chinese food. Okay, next up is Lodging House at 1087 Beacon Street for change of lodging house agent from David Gloth to Catherine O'Leary.
Aye.
Howdy.
I'm David Gloth, 1087 Beacon Street. She couldn't be here tonight, so they said it was okay because it was short notice for her.
Okay.
Sorry.
So what's, what's happening?
I'm just having her be the agent.
Okay.
What's the name of the place?
We go under the name Beacon Inn.
Oh.
Yeah.
I see it on the T.
Oh, good.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I see that the proposed agent's going to attend a training with our health department next month. Is that, that correct?
They usually do whatever they do routinely.
This isn't a public hearing, but if anyone wishes to speak to this application, now is your time. I see none, so I will move that we approve the application of Lodging House located at 1087 Beacon Street, David Gloth and Keeper General Manager for a change of lodging house agent to Catherine O'Leary. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
I've never witnessed anything.
Yeah.
I'm so shocked, and I thought you did a fabulous decision.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last, well, second to last item on the agenda is Brookline Spa is changing ownership. What's happening?
Good evening, my name is Hugo Oliveira. I'm a resident of Stonem, just wish in the future to be a resident of Brookline, starting with the business. And so pretty much my idea is to keep everything the same, just change of the ownership.
Okay. So the hours of operation, they stay the same?
Oh, yes, few changes, but I meant the same by the food, the menu. I want to keep the same cuisine. I want to extend the hours. I believe there's a need in the area for a little bit longer hours in the evening. And I've been told that they used to have breakfast, they no longer have, and people are missing that, so I was thinking on trying that as well. I would like to make very few changes to the menu, I'd like to add a little more healthy options, like gluten-free pizza, a little more vegetarian sandwiches, a few things that I might, I think that people might like it.
So you want to go to 1:00 AM?
Well, I, that's some days of the week. I, long, long time ago, was involved in some other pizza shops in Boston and in Cambridge, and we used to deliver here in Brookline until 2:00 in the morning. So I know that people from Brookline are ordering pizzas, so why not have a business from Brookline to take advantage of that public? I'm not sure if I'm going to do that, I would like to get a license for it. I spoke with the current owners, they have been there for many, many years, and so I was hoping to see how the business goes, and of course, if there's no business on those times, it won't be open.
Because they currently close now at like, what, 8:30?
Eight.
Eight?
Yeah.
Yes. I've been one of those patrons that came in right as they were closing and could not believe that they closed at eight.
Yeah, today eight was pretty, it was daylight outside, so a little early for dinner, I think.
Yeah, we're pretty hungry after these meetings.
I was on the way home from this meeting.
You guys have a place to eat after the meeting?
Have the Butters received notice of this? Because it's, there are some residences right around there, I'm just a little concerned about the 1:00 AM.
You know, I, I don't know if, I know we typically will send a notice to all the elected town meeting members in the area, unless it's a required public hearing, I doubt we, we send notices to Butters.
How many residences are there? I mean, I think there's one building right next to it, but...
Uh, well, there's, yeah, that's a pretty dense, well, across the street from St. Mary's, and then...
Linden Street.
Other side of the school.
Isn't that Linden?
No, it's not Linden, it's Brook.
Brook.
Which is kind of three deckers.
And then Heard Road is one block back. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty dense back there.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
You planning to have entertainment?
Well, just playing music, you know, like radio music and the speakers.
Inside.
Yeah, like tape music inside, but I'm not going to do that, of course, at 1:00 AM. I'm going to start that early. The 1:00 AM is mostly focused on delivering pizzas, so I don't expect any food traffic or absolutely no noise inside the restaurant at this time.
We could approve till 10:00, and then he could come back?
I don't know, I'd be willing to go up to 11:00 and then come back if you want to go on that.
What, Friday and Saturday?
Some...
Midnight for all days.
I'm just, there's nothing else in the area, well, there's not, no other, no other eating, there's no other place in the area that would generate foot traffic at that hour.
Man Murphys.
Well, that's, that's down the street, that's...
When does the Walgreens close? And that generates a decent amount of foot traffic.
11:30, I think.
Yeah. And that's the only place you can get food at that time.
Voting the options.
11:00 or 11:30 is, you know, fine. And again, if you told me that there were notices to the neighbors and they didn't come, then it would be a different story, but I do think there should be an opportunity for them to weigh in.
So would we go seven days, would we go seven days to 11:00?
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you, would you consider like Friday and Saturday to go a little late? Those days are, you know...
Friday, Saturday, midnight?
Most people are out in the streets, bars are open, and...
Yeah, I think...
Come home a little bit later.
So Friday, Saturday, midnight, other days 11:00, and if you, if you want to go later, have a track record?
Sounds great.
And come back.
Come back.
I want to dig in for a second on the delivery. Does the restaurant currently have delivery service?
Well, kind of, their driver was off three months for healthy reasons, so they were using like, like Grubhub or Uber delivery, so it wasn't really, they're not really taking advantage of the deliveries.
So my question is really around parking for that delivery vehicle. Is there a parking space that comes with this?
No, there are no parking spaces. I, I, hoping that, I was going to apply, I'm going to apply for the commercial parking permit, and I was hoping that most of the deliveries would be for dinnertime, which at that point, you can park on the street, it's plenty of street parking.
What about the delivery to the restaurant of supplies?
We'll stay the current. I'm going to actually start with the same supplier. I'm keeping the same pass control, I'm keeping the same trash collection, because I want to see what's working well, what should change, and I want to give it some time. So I don't want any changes on the food, same, I'm keeping the same supplier with the same delivery schedule.
This isn't a public hearing, but if anyone wishes to speak to this license, now is your time. I see none. So I'll move that we approve the application of Olive Tree LLC Doing Business, Brookline Pizza Spa Restaurant, Hugo Olivier, Olivier.
Oliveira, yeah, Portuguese.
Manager for Common Vittuilla License, I'm terrible with names. Entertainment, Radio Tape Music License at 75 Harvest Street, inside seating capacity is eight. Hours of operation Monday to Thursday, 6:00 AM to 11:00, Friday, Saturday, 6:00 AM to midnight, Sunday, 8:00 AM to 11:00. Entertainment hours daily from 9:00 AM to 11:00. Location, oh, okay. So that's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Hope you guys stop by.
Okay, we will. Okay, so now, we just got done with town meeting, and we have to plan for the next town meeting. And this is proposing that town meeting happens on November 13th, which actually turns out to be a little early this year. It's the week after Election Day, so Election Day is the 6th, and then Thanksgiving is early this year. So it's the week, it's the week in between Election Day and Thanksgiving.
Well, and also November 12th is this, the celebration of veterans, their commemoration of veterans day.
Right, so there'll be a holiday right before. So the other option, which people, people I was speaking to didn't like, the other option is to do it right after Thanksgiving.
Ooh.
Right, exactly. So we certainly don't want to do it Thanksgiving week. So this has the closing of the warrant in August. My gosh.
It closed on August 30th last year.
Really?
Yep. Because I remember us having this exact same conversation.
My, my immediate reaction to this is having supplemental deadline the day after Election Day is going to be tight, particularly when we don't have a meeting on the second, on the 6th, on Election Day. So we're, we're going to have to have everything sort of nailed down a week and a half before...
Unless we have an extra meeting.
Maybe we could have a meeting on the, on the 5th.
On the Monday.
On the night before Election Day?
Yeah, that's...
You're referring to the supplemental...
Not perfect.
Reports?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I'm not sure there's another alternative, I just foresee those meetings, those pre-time meeting meetings being substantive.
Yeah?
It is what it is.
No.
It is what it is.
That's why we pay the big bucks.
But there always, there always are things that come up at the last minute, so I'd be concerned about not having a meeting the week before. I mean, we can, we can plan for it and then cancel it if we don't need it.
Well, we have between now and November to figure that out.
I'm not advocating for more meetings, but I am advocating for...
I'm not being helpful, I'm just pointing out issues. I have no solutions.
Okay.
And we've checked to make sure that we're not holding on any holidays here.
Yeah, we, yeah, the, yeah, the holiday situation apparently has been checked. The dates have been run by the moderator, we know he's going to be in town. Where we run into trouble is if a town meeting goes to a fourth night.
Yeah.
Then we're into Thanksgiving, potentially either Thanksgiving week or after Thanksgiving. But hopefully, we, we won't go to a fourth. It's been a long time since we've had four-night town meeting. And if we didn't have one last, this past town meeting, gosh.
Knocked.
Well, so the relevant dates at the front end are the opening of the warrant is the 2nd of August, Thursday, August 2nd, and it closes August 30th, so...
Right.
If you're thinking of a warrant article or a resolution...
You better forget about a summer vacation.
Yeah, start, start now, and make plans to have it submitted during August.
Right. Okay, so I guess we have to vote the dates of the town meeting.
The first date.
First date of town meeting, and then the opening, closing of the warrant. Okay, so the motion is to open the warrant on August 2nd, close it on August 30th, which leads up to a town meeting on November 13th, Tuesday. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we have completed our business for tonight.